Also Commissioner McIntyre will be calling in instead of being on the Zoom meeting.
Yes, I'm gonna go ahead and look for her number so I can add her to panel. Just wait one moment.
And just in case any of you are wondering, Brian Eric, our city attorney is going to be present tonight. Sometimes we have city attorney presence in our planning commission hearings when we have controversial topics.
Is there something controversial tonight, Phil?
Perhaps, if it would appear that way by the volume of public comment, yes.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening.
So I'm not seeing Commissioner McIntyre's phone number, so if you're listening, Commissioner McIntyre, if you could raise your hand and I'll add you to the panel. Maybe she's not on yet.
You star nine?
Yeah, star nine on your phone. No. Okay, maybe she's not here yet.
I may be able to give her another moment or two, otherwise we appear to have a quorum.
Right, six, seven, okay. Yeah, so we'll give her a moment. Does somebody have their cellphone where they could text her and see?
I'm doing that right now.
Okay, thanks, Victoria. Yes, when we start, can you lead us in the pledge?
Excuse me?
When we start, can you lead us in the pledge?
No, definitely.
Thank you.
Kelly Gleason's in two spots.
I am. I have to use two different computers to make everything work.
Holy moly. Here, I thought I've made a big improvement today. Became really tucky today. I got an app to deposit money in the bank on my phone and I did it this morning. Stepping up in the world. And here you have two screens.
Is Commissioner Anderson not going to be here tonight?
That's right.
Lucky him.
He is absent tonight. He did, he does have an excused absence, Commissioner Anderson.
Does that mean a doctor's note?
Yeah.
A white note.
A white note?
It's more like a director's. He has a director's note.
One who plays on TV. My doctor on TV.
Yeah.
My husband has a PhD, does that count?
All right, so we haven't heard from McIntyre yet, correct? Has anyone heard from her yet? Oh, Victoria was reaching out, right?
No, I haven't heard anything.
So let's go ahead and proceed.
Yeah.
Chair.
Hi.
Yeah, so welcome to the regular session of the planning meeting for the Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. We're glad that everybody could join us and we will start with a pledge of allegiance and if everybody could please stand and follow. Commissioner Schmidt, and if you wouldn't mind muting so we don't talk over each other, that'd be, that would be great.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sometimes I'm not sure if that's such a good thing to stand like that in front of the.
I like the American Gothic.
Okay. So can, can I get? An approval of the agenda, please?
They need to start with a roll call.
Oh, sorry, sorry, yes.
Oh, that's okay.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Commissioner Carranza.
Here.
Commissioner Hughes.
Present.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner McIntyre. Not here. Vice Chairperson King.
Here.
Chairperson Vanden Eyck.
Yeah.
And for the record, Commissioner Anderson is an excused absence, so we have five present at the moment.
Okay, then can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Randy, I got Randy, there's the Dennis. Annette, can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King.
Yes.
Chairperson Vanden Eyck.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Great, we'll move into the public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on this agenda or which the commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please state your name for the record before making a presentation. The commission may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Do we have anybody in attendance online that would like to make a public comment on anything that's not an agenda? And if you are, if you could raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand.
And I am not seeing anyone raising their hand at this time.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be.
Sorry, Commissioner Vanden Eyck, we actually do have someone that just raised their hand.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to allow you to speak now.
It looks like there's, oh, here we go.
There you go, yeah.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I was curious, is the chief of police in attendance tonight?
Do not see them.
No, I don't believe our chief of police is in attendance. Our city attorney is in attendance, however.
Okay, I just wanted to bring to the table a traffic, hazardous traffic situation. If that's not good for the table at this point, I can defer it for a later time to the chief of police or whatnot.
If it's a matter of the planning commission, you can bring that up. You can also contact me, email me or phone me. I'm the community development director. You can give me even a text message if you'd like.
Okay.
And you can leave a message at my, my normal office line, which is eight oh five four seven zero three four eight eight, or you can always email me at P Dunsmore at atascadero.org.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would refer that matter to our public works director if it's a traffic issue and he's not in attendance tonight, but I can give him your information.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay. Seeing as there is no other it's like there's nobody else raising their hand, we'll move on. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and non-controversial by staff, city staff, and will be approved by one motion if no member of the commission or public wishes to comment or ask questions. Do we have any comments or questions on the consent calendar? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, first and a second. Annette, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King.
Yes.
Chairperson Vanden Eyck.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
So we don't have any items in our planning commission business or community development staff report, so we're going to move into our public hearings. For each of the following items, the public will be given the opportunity to speak after staff report, the chair will open the public hearing and invite the applicant and applicant's representative to make any comments. Members of the public will be invited to provide testimony to the commission following the act. Speakers should state their name for the record and can address the commission for three minutes. After all public comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will discuss the item and take the appropriate actions. So our first item on is the amendments to Title IX, Chapter seventeen of the zoning code to allow non-storefront delivery cannabis business in the city. Do we need to do expertise on this? It's listed.
We do, because it's a public hearing item.
Okay. Do you have any expertise on this item? We'll start with person at the top, Randy, do you have an expertise on this item?
Not on this item.
Okay, Dennis?
No expertise.
Tori?
No expertise.
Victoria?
No.
Neither do I. So why don't we go ahead with our staff report?
Great, thank you, Chair, and I'll, I'll just probably briefly introduce the topic. I'm going to have John bring up the presentation. Our planner, John, and then I'm going to let him describe some of the details, but I just want to give you just a quick overview of where this is going. We've been talking about cannabis and amendments to our cannabis ordinance for the past couple of years. We did do a very significant public outreach effort on this several years ago. But recently, the city council has provided direction to staff to come back with ordinance that just for now looks at this one component, which is the delivery services, which are actually already occurring in our city. But this would allow them to operate from within the city, which does change how these can be taxed and regulated. That's really the primary amendment tonight. The chief of police did weigh in on this amendment by providing some additional amendments to our security conditions and some of those particulars, and we're going to go through and discuss that tonight. It's coincidental that this is on April twentieth. That was no intention, but apparently there is a nickname for cannabis, which is four twenty and it's, it's just four twenty. That was by no active staff. It just happens to be coincidental. But anyway, with no further ado, I'm going to have our planner, John Holder, our associate planner, go through some of the details and I may chime in as well as we go through this brief presentation.
All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you for the introduction, Phil, and good evening, planning commission. As Phil said, I'll be discussing the amendments to the city's cannabis ordinance tonight. So I have a couple of slides and staff is here to answer any questions you might have. So just a little background, as Phil mentioned, the Tuscaloosa City Council has been examining the allowance of additional commercial cannabis land uses in the city. For some time now, that started back in twenty seventeen during the adoption of the city's ordinance and most recently staff has provided the council some information on the allowance of additional commercial cannabis land uses over the past year. And as Phil mentioned, this will allow for delivery services, which are already under state law, regardless of what ordinance, ordinances are already allowed in the city. So these amendments would allow for non-storefront delivery services through an amendment to the city's municipal code Title IX, Chapter seventeen, or cannabis activities in the regulation. And just to keep in mind that this is a non-storefront, non-public visitation use. So just a bit of recent history. The city conducted extensive public outreach in twenty seventeen as part of the lead up to the adoption of the city's cannabis ordinance, which took place in October twenty seventeen. And later in November twenty eighteen, the city adopted the cannabis tax measure in order to further regulate tax or sorry, regulate cannabis businesses in the city. Most recently in twenty twenty, twenty twenty, the city adopted a cannabis business license to specific to delivery businesses that operate outside the city or that are located outside the city and operate within city limits. And as I mentioned, over the past year, specifically May, November twenty twenty, the city council received an analysis of additional commercial cannabis land uses in the city and options to amend the ordinance to allow for additional commercial cannabis land uses. Just a brief background on the state regulations for commercial cannabis. In twenty seventeen, the state of California passed SB ninety-four, or the medicinal and adult use cannabis interregulation act, which allowed for commercial cannabis throughout the state of California. The primary regulating agencies at the state level are the Bureau of Cannabis Control, which issues state cannabis licenses, the Department of Public Health, which regulates manufactured products of cannabis, and the Department of Food and Agriculture, which regulates commercial cannabis cultivation. And this is a brief, basic overview of the California supply chain. In the top left, you see cultivation of commercial cannabis, and that is either indoor or outdoor use cultivation of cannabis. From there, the product is transported to manufacturing uses and/or distribution uses. The green circles signify the uses that we currently allow in the city under our current ordinance. We do conditionally allow for testing facilities. However, we do not have any current testing facilities in the city. And as we mentioned, we, under state law, we have to allow delivery of commercial cannabis products for sale in the city.
The only distinction is we don't have to allow them to actually operate from within the city, but we do have to allow them to operate in the city, if that makes any sense, from a location that's outside the city. So that's really the key thing to remember about this change tonight.
Correct. And then through distribution, the commercial cannabis or cannabis products, and then through either delivery services or storefront retail. They end up in the hands of the happy user, as you see there in the top right. And just to mention, the city council over the past year did examine and discuss these additional uses, particularly distribution and manufacturing and cultivation. And it was basically determined that the market demand isn't really worth the impacts to the community. So at this time, we are amending the ordinance to only allow for deliveries to services to locate within the city. So as I mentioned, Title IX, Chapter seventeen currently allows for testing labs, personal cultivation of cannabis. And we do allow for delivery services to operate in the city that are currently based outside of the city. These amendments would allow for the delivery of cannabis products to continue and for those businesses that deliver those products to be located within the city and operate under a city business license. So the proposed zoning amendments clarify that delivery services would, would be required to obtain a conditional use permit. And just to reiterate, these services do not allow for onsite customers and they are subject to discussionary review through the conditional use permit process. So all these businesses would have to apply to the city, go through designer review committee hearing, and also planning commission in order to obtain the conditional use permit. These uses are proposed to be allowed in the industrial, commercial professional, commercial retail, commercial service and commercial park zones. And the CEP process will also help ensure that the mitigation of any potential community impacts are mitigated through performance criteria. And these are, could be in the form of conditions that will apply to the conditional use permit, such as security and operations plans, signage plan, employee safety and training plan. And there's a substantial list that you have in your packet of what these performance criteria may be. And it's also important to note that the state also recommends a six hundred foot buffer between these types of businesses and sensitive land uses. And we do have that mapped out for all these zoning districts. So as I mentioned, the proposed zoning amendment consists of minor tech changes to conditionally allow for delivery services to be based in the city of Atascadero. And just to reiterate, these are only type nine or non-storefront retail licensed businesses. So there will be no storefront retail, only office use in minor commercial uses related to delivery services. So staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the draft resolution you had before you. Recommending that the city council introduce draft ordinance A for first reading by Title only to approve amendments to Title IX, Chapter seventeen.
I, I think we have all the proposed ordinance language in your printed staff report, and I think we might be able to put the draft comments on the screen if we want to talk about any of the code language specifically and go through some of those changes that we have in the code. Some of those are really primarily geared towards ensuring that these land uses have proper security. And just for example, a couple of those things that we're proposing in there are that they have onsite security guard and that, for example, when you have a delivery service, this was a suggestion from our police chief that a vehicle actually has to pull inside that business to deal with the product or to deal with cash. Interesting. So basically it means that these places would have to go into a site that has a roll up door. And so that's something that our chief is recommending. There is also some other provisions in there that require that these businesses do not have visible exterior signage that advertises what they are. Obviously, there's concerns with this kind of business because they have currently still a cash basis business. They, they aren't able to deal with a lot of credit or other, other transaction forms. So a lot of them are still a lot of cash based, so still a security concern. That's one of the issues that we're really trying to circumvent by having some of these positions. Anyway, just wanted to clarify that, but that concludes our presentation, so we're happy to answer your questions and go through some of the code. Of course, you have the typical set of alternatives that John just put on the screen. It reminds me of those guys, but um, that's probably all we have to say for now.
Yeah, thanks, Phil. So we're here to answer any questions and, and as Phil said, we, we have the text ready to go if we want to go through any specific changes. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Well, open up the questions for staff, and I see that Dennis has his hand raised. Dennis?
Thank you. In selecting the land use categories of, for where this use can occur, or uses in the future can occur, how did we go about that? And why did we limit then the, this activity to those land use categories?
So you're asking, just to clarify, are you asking about the actual zoning districts or just this land use itself?
Um, in general, you had a list of land uses that seemed like future uses could be, could fall within categories.
Yeah.
I kind of, interestingly, I'm wondering why public zoning wasn't included in that. And it was more, I guess, satirical for me to say that.
Yeah, it's interesting. No, public zoning is actually a very, very unusual zoning district. If you read our general plan, plan description of public zoning, it's designed for public uses, a park, a fire station, a police station, a school, in some cases, a church. It's not designed for private office use, which is what this land use is. It's not designed for private retail uses, which, what, what this use is. It's not designed, designed for private industry, which is what this land use is. So the public district is, is an anomaly. Otherwise, really, we put every other commercial district as an allowable district for this particular land use. Because really, it's a very low impacting land use. It doesn't have any significant issues to it other than the security issues.
Okay, thank you. I was intrigued by the comment about licensing and the emphasis that was placed that delivery services is based outside of the city. Are there any delivery services, can, can someone within the city have a delivery service and do they require a license?
So that's what this amendment is about. Right now, we've got about eight delivery services that are delivering cannabis products into our city that are based outside the city. This would allow them to set up an office in the city. They would have to get a state license from the Bureau of Cannabis Control and they would have to get a city business license and register for city tax. Now, when they're based in the city, we get the sales tax from the location of origin and we get the cannabis tax. When they're based outside the city, we just get the cannabis tax. And the sales tax is given to the city of where they're located.
But there would be a licensing requirement for either, either situation outside.
When they're based outside the city, they still are required to get a city business license as an out of town vendor and are still required to pay the cannabis tax.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Randy.
So you mentioned that there would be a required security. I'm assuming would that be a private security that they're using as like license for dealing with this? Like I know Grover Beach, they have a specific, a very unique security that they run there, like looking at other cities, or would this be compensating on the law enforcement side? Like, would we be dedicating someone to be closer to that area?
They need to hire their own private security firm to handle that security. The city would not be able to provide them security other than normal law enforcement activities that we do throughout the city for any business.
Okay, thank you.
Tori?
Actually have a bunch of questions, but on that security question, are we, is there a specific kind of security we're going to acquire? I mean, are we going to require a security guard or like video cameras is okay?
Let's just look at some of those.
Sort of.
Yeah, let's take a look at some of those code amendments that we can, John, so we can and talk about that specific language that we have in the code now and what we're proposing to add. But really, to further clarify that, with a conditional use permit, we're going to look at each one of these and determine what the best situation is. Not only cameras, but an onsite security guard if necessary. And I think, like, let's take a look at what are the provisions we have in here. Let's take a look and, or maybe you could just, I can take a look at what we have written down in our code. John, if you can help me out with that as to what we're recommending.
I think just knowing that it will depend on the location of where they're going and that it will be like a condition of their, of their CUP, that's, that's.
Yes, that's exactly it, because we will, we will examine it and say, okay, where are you located? What's your business plan? What do you, what do you propose?
Okay.
And then make a determination, and also the police chief will review that and make a determination to determine if what their proposal is, is adequate and consistent with our code.
So the city staff would include that in their report, what they, what kind of security they recommend for the location.
Okay, the police department would review each one as well.
Okay. Um, what, so I, I noticed that there was a lot of references to potential. potential impacts of cannabis business. Like, what kind of impacts? Are there certain impacts that the city kind of foresees? Or is that just sort of kind of an open language kind of thing?
That's an open language thing. A lot of impacts from these businesses are assumed.
Okay.
There's not a lot of impacts that are reality from these impacts. What we've seen in other local cities is the impact is really an economic impact. And it's a positive impact.
Yeah.
There is health impacts from anything that, for example, you sell alcohol, you have a health impact. You sell cannabis, you have a health impact. You sell cigarettes, you have a health impact. There are those impacts for the end user. But that's not what we're, what we analyze and get into as a city.
Right.
Analyze the other land use impacts. Is this going, is this land use going to be impacting to their neighbors? If they locate somewhere. The state already requires them to be 600 feet away from any school, park, children's center, community center. So that's kind of pretty mitigated. So we try and look at the other situations, but we don't really see this to be a a detrimental land use or an impacting land use.
So it'll be another thing kind of based on the location that they're wanting to go to.
Yeah, and based on their own internal security plan and how they set up their business.
Okay. And then the cannabis permit is that's going to be a yearly fee that they pay to have the location in Atascadero.
Correct.
Is is that a normal thing? I mean, does Grover Beach and Marbey have that as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. I tried to Google it, but I couldn't find a lot of information on it.
Yeah, a lot of times they have what's called a an agreement, a community benefit agreement, but they also have a annual application. And what that does is it gives the city an opportunity to say, all right, have you been behaving well? Are you not impacting the neighborhood? Do we have crime issues associated with your business? Are you paying your tax revenue to the city as you're supposed to? Are you continuing your state license? It allows us the staff time to analyze all those things for them to check. And so that we can renew their business license. Every business in the city has to renew their business license annually anyway. But as a cannabis business, we do want to put that in a separate category, in a separate box, because it does have its own state requirements and it does have its own security requirements. And we want to be sure to follow up with that and be sure that we can get staff compensation for that time.
Okay, that all makes perfect sense. And then I was curious, as it says that the security system needs to be accessible to the city of Atascadero. Does that just mean like if if something happens on the property and the police need that information, they can say, hey, I need your video footage, not like I need to be able to log into your IP address whenever I want to.
That's a good question. I thought it was, yeah, we want to be able to see your footage. I don't know whether that means they need live access all the time. Do you recall?
Yeah, so what? And that was a recommendation from our police chief. He's in his previous position, he kind of went through this same ordinance adoption. And he recommended that we that their 24 hour surveillance footage is available to our police department. But just just surveillance footage and security camera footage.
So it'd be something they could ask for after the fact, not something that they would have live access to.
It could go either way. I guess that that would be part of that security plan. How the ordinance language is now, it's it's kind of loose. So we have that flexibility to either just guarantee access to that footage if there's a security incident. But as far as I understand, I don't think we need the live stream.
Okay.
So like, we'll be monitoring that and there's no need for that as far as I know. It's just that we have access in case we need it.
And then I noticed that in one part of it, I didn't mark down where it was, but the hours of operation for a delivery facility were crossed out. Are there going to be specific hours of operation or is that going to be another thing that's dependent upon the location of the building?
There will be specific hours. I think we have that in here. I think we changed the location of it. It's why it's crossed out.
Oh, okay. That makes sense.
And that's also regulated under state law, but we can make it more restrictive. Under state law, it has to be between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. And I believe ours was a little bit more restricted than that.
Yeah, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM is what we have proposed.
That seems reasonable.
That's for the cannabis testing. Let me make sure that's, yeah, that's all of them. Okay.
Yeah, so 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM for deliveries?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you mentioned that you spoke with the chief of police to get security input. But did we speak, did the city speak with any like delivery business owners to get their input on these changes?
We did. Yeah, over the past couple of years, I've spoken to several of these businesses and did let them know that this is coming forward tonight as well. I hope we have somebody online that wants to speak about it.
Me too.
Because we haven't really heard much input and we do need their input as to how we handle these. And I know there's been a couple that have been requesting to locate in Atascadero for some time.
Yeah, we would be the only north county town that would, or at least incorporated town that would allow it, right? Because Paso does not.
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm glad that we're getting ahead of that because that seems like a good thing to get ahead of. So that is all my questions. I appreciate you letting me take up a whole bunch of time.
Last question?
Was that Randy?
Yes. Um, I know neighboring cities are going the direction where they are wanting backup generators installed at these locations normally to run their security in case of blackout or, you know, anything happens. The place is always secure. Do you know if we have anything like set in place, just pre-prepared?
We don't have anything like that in the code. That's certainly something we can add with each of these review processes. If that's what the commission wants to do as we review them on a case by case basis in the future.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Any other planning commissioner questions? Victor?
Yeah, I was obviously reviewing the entire text and looked at the edits that were made. And we're looking at tonight specifically, but also was drawn to page 20 on the criminal background requirements. And so I was curious what the reasoning was around, well, it talks about no person ate. I, no person who is currently charged with or has been convicted within the previous 10 years of a felony, a felony or misdemeanor involving moral perpetuity or any crime involving the sale, possession for corporate officer or possession for sale, manufacturer, transportation, cultivation, or distribution of a controlled substance shall be an owner, corporate officer, partner, manager, employee, or volunteer of a cannabis testing facility permitted under this chapter. I was curious because it seems reasonable to me, all of it, except for the misdemeanor portion. If someone's already been penalized and now they're not even allowed to volunteer, let alone work. And so it's a job issue for me and a little too punitive in the language. And I know that it's not a text amendment tonight, but I'm curious about that one. If there's anything we can do to amend that portion.
Yes, that's a good question, actually. It is in our existing code. So thanks for pointing it out. It's not proposed for amendment tonight. It was put in place in 2017. And I believe it's pretty much synonymous with what the state mandates already in their state licensing program. And we echoed it in our local code as well. And a lot of other cities have the same exact thing. But I, but I must say, you're right, because it certainly narrows the market to try and hire individuals for this type of a lineup.
Exactly what I'm saying.
And I've heard that from some of these cannabis folks that they really have a hard time hiring people that are interested in dealing with this product yet that have a perfectly, perfectly spotless, clean record.
And for those who have had misdemeanors involving this kind of activity, if they've served time, they may have actually more experience than someone who doesn't have a misdemeanor, to be quite frank. So I was, you know, I was curious about amending that and making a motion for that minor modification if that's all on the table.
Well, and I I think that's a tough one because staff is not prepared to tell you whether we we can even go there or not because of the fact of the state code and where it goes on that.
Yeah, I understand.
And that's a little bit outside the window, but what you can do is we have a couple of options, actually. If you want to make a motion to continue for staff to come back with that topic, that's one option. If you want to make a recommendation to the city council that they loosen up that language, that's another one. And you could come up with some draft language proposed for that, I suppose. And then in between the planning commission hearing and city council hearing, we can evaluate whether that's something that we have the ability to do based on the state law. And we can talk with our police team and our and our legal team to see whether that is in our wheelhouse.
Okay.
So I guess maybe your first effort is to see if you can get a motion on the table that the other commissioners agree with before we even worry about it.
Right, I know. And I'm like, okay, now now I'll have to think of some language because I I do think that the whole currently charged with, that seems like we should keep that. But if they have been convicted within previous 10 years, that's the piece that I think is too punitive. So I'm trying to think of the language for that to remedy. But maybe I can also open it up to see if that was even something that my commission wanted to entertain tonight.
Yeah.
So let's hold on to that for for the moment and finish up with staff questions. I have one. So, John, you said that there was a map prepared that would show where these where the businesses could be located based on all the requirements. Is is that available?
Oh, yeah. So can you see these slides?
Yeah.
To make sure the screenshot is working. So these were actually first completed back in 2017 when the city first adopted the ordinance. So these are the buffers around some sensitive land uses, which I believe to be schools and parks. And it's kind of a snapshot of of where we could allow these land uses and where they're actually currently allowed, I believe, at least the testing facilities. And then with that 600 foot buffer.
Okay. So could you scroll through those maybe?
Yeah, happy to. So this is north of Atascadero. Kind of in that CPK zone along El Camino. This is more middle El Camino, just north of downtown. These are all the sensitive land uses. As you can see, there's quite a few. But there are some available commercial areas where these businesses would be able to go in that area. And again, this is downtown and then a little bit of Moro Road to the south. As you can see, downtown has quite a few sensitive land uses with the schools and parks we have. So that could be difficult, but there are some commercial retail and commercial service areas that we are proposing to condition allow them in commercial retail, but limit them to commercial services, commercial park and commercial professional because there are more of an office use. And we find that they're more appropriate in those zoning districts. This is along South El Camino real. And as you can see, there are some commercial service zone parcels adjacent to the sensitive land uses. And I believe, and this is out on traffic ways, so the industrial zone parcels in the sensitive land uses with the buffer in red. So as you can see, there there are some appropriate zoning areas for these businesses that that would be located with that buffer.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open this up to public hearing for public comment. And if there's anybody that would like to comment on this item that is online or phoning in, we'd like to hear from you. If you could, please raise your hand.
Jeff, if I could just interject real quick too, I saw a couple of comments come through on the chat and I just want to make sure that people know that I don't believe our chat becomes part of the public record. So if they still have questions or want to ask a question, please use public comment time to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have one hand up right now. Jamie Jones?
Yes, let me go ahead and I don't have the ability to let her speak. Kelly, are you able to do that?
Kelly is the person, the host.
Let me see what I can do. I am not seeing my normal.
Always amazing what has to happen in the background to make all this stuff work. You guys would be pretty impressed. I can't run the show from the background, so I have Kelly or Mariah do it because there's a lot of technical, technical stuff.
Yeah, I think Jamie's on now.
Okay, Jamie, would you like to make comment?
Great, thank you. Thank you, Kelly, for unmuting me. Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. My name is Jamie Jones. I am an over 20 year resident of Atascadero and own Kirk Consulting, a land use planning firm located on Moro Road. In my previous life, I was a planner at the city. Phil and I worked together when we were much younger. And more recently, I spent several years on the city's development review committee. I appreciate the city opening the door for additional cannabis uses in our city limits. Through my company, Kirk Consulting, I represent a variety of cannabis projects in the unincorporated areas of the county. Uses for applications that I represent include cannabis cultivation, nursery, manufacturing and processing facilities. I, as a resident of Atascadero, would like to bring those projects and their tax dollars and economic benefits to our city. And I think moving forward with this ordinance amendment tonight is a great first step in bringing other cannabis industries to our city. I would encourage the commission to support the proposed ordinance amendments and request the commission encourage the council to engage in additional conversation and outreach to reassess the community's appetite for additional cannabis uses. I understand the council has been cautious in regards to cannabis uses, but the market is there and the timing seems right for our city to capture some of these uses. We only see support for these uses increase as the years go by, as the fear element is removed and cannabis is recognized for what it is, a legal crop and industry with significant tax benefits for local agencies. In 1996, Prop 215, a ballot measure for medicinal use, the vote in our city, and we looked at just our city vote was 55 against and 45 in support. Fast forward to 2016, Prop 64, the ballot to legalize adult cannabis use, the vote flipped and our city was 45 against and 55 in support. When looking at the 2017 cannabis survey data and based on the the city survey, 75% of the respondents supported retail, recreation, brick and mortar stores, 72% of the respondents supported commercial cultivation and 75% of the respondents support manufacturing. And finally, this overwhelming support was further realized in the E18 citywide cannabis tax vote where 73.5 of our city residences voted in support of the measure. And looking at it from a tax perspective, you know, let's look at what's going on in Grover Beach. In their midyear budget report that came out in February for 20 of the year 2020 and 2021, 12% of the entire city budget for Grover Beach was derived from cannabis tax revenue. They have a projected annual tax for $2.3 million. This is just cannabis tax. And this is from three retailers, six manufacturers and two distributors. I think we all can recognize that the non storefront is not a significant chunk of that revenue. But when you you look at that, what the retailers, manufacturers and distributors are doing, $2.3 million. That's a lot of money. So again, I would encourage the commission to support the proposed ordinance and recommend the council consider uses in addition to the non storefront retail use under consideration tonight to capture the market because it's out there and we want to bring it to your city. Thank you.
You too. Well, appreciate that. Do we have any other attendees that would like to address this item?
I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
In that case, we'll go ahead and so close that for a public or public hearing and bring it back to commission.
I have one more question.
I have one more question. I'm sorry. Um, I didn't see it anywhere in here, so I'm assuming the answer is no, but I just wanted to make sure. Are we going to limit the number of facilities we will allow in Atascadero?
We do not have a number limit proposed in our ordinance right now for this particular land use.
Okay.
If we were to go to other land uses, we would probably seriously consider that. Because if you go to a full resale land use, for example, I won't get into it now, but there's a lot of reasons you would limit the number to avoid oversaturating your market.
That's a that's a very big conversation for another night.
Yes, it is.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you.
So are there any other questions for staff or or discussion among planning commissioners? And if not, does somebody want to make a a motion?
Well, while I have you all here and I don't have to individually reach out to every single person, which I could do, but I'm wondering what anyone's comments are from what I suggested and if Phil's advice, any of those alternatives would be something that anyone has advice for me on.
In general, I thought all three comments that were made were, I think, relevant to the discussion. That by Victoria, that by Tori, and that also by Randy.
I think, Victoria, that we should definitely put it back to staff and see what we can do to amend that because I agree with you that it's incredibly punitive. And I would definitely like to know what our options are to change that that section. Right. And I I guess I just see that I don't want to stall what progress we could make tonight. So I get I get that reality and I find that to be a very big deal. So. Maybe we could can we can we pass it the way it is, but agendize that one section for a later time, Bill?
What you could do is recommend the city council approve this amendment, but also recommend the city council look at options to amend that particular section to make it easier for people that have minor offenses in the past record to be hired by these particular businesses without having to come up with specific language. I don't know if our city attorney is listening to me right now, and if that's something that we can legally do, if Brian is listening, if he wants to chime in.
Brett, yeah, how lucky to have him on this night.
So that's where we get into situations where I don't know if we're outside of our purview to do that. And if you can legally do that, but or if we have to have very specific language that we recommend.
So Phil, Phil, my my thoughts on that are that the state is pretty much preempted the most local control. And my belief is that you would not be able to impose those types of employment requirements. However, I don't have all of the provisions in front of me and I can't give you a definite answer. But I I think it's likely that it is preempted by state law.
Okay. So could, I guess my question for you, Brian, is your eyes, can the planning commission make a recommendation to city council to approve these amendments? But to look at options to modify that section to make it easier to hire individuals or to make it consistent with the state statute without having a specific language.
Yes, they can.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an interesting discussion in the sense that the, I mean, laws change. And sometimes what used to be felonies are now misdemeanors. And I'm I'm wondering if the state changes some laws. And the city has this in effect. Does the city then respond and make changes to reflect what the state does in terms of changing the the crimes. Again, a lot of what we used to be felonies now are misdemeanors, especially in this area. And so someone might have been convicted of a felony. That is now a misdemeanor.
So I can answer that one. The answer is if there's been a change in state law that that would be inconsistent with the city's code, the state law preempts the city's code and the state law would apply. Having said that, it's our standard practice that if there is a state law that's passed and it's inconsistent with the code, that we will generally amend the city's code to make it consistent with state law.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay.
Well, and I'm hearing from everybody too that for, I guess, Dennis and Tori, that it's it would be good to move this forward. And if we can revisit, I would motion for that to look at this one particular item. I'm also wondering with Randy if we'd like to also take a look at that, even though the generator issue, if if that's something that we revisit and just paperclip that on to the eight I.
So we have a motion on the table by Commissioner, who who made the motion? I'm sorry.
No motions.
Actually, there's been no motion.
Oh, has there been a motion? Okay, so great. So what? Yeah, if if one of the commissioners decides to make a motion, you can add that recommendation into it and see if it flies.
Okay, so I would make a motion to recommend the city council pass the changes to the ordinance with particular attention paid to eight I to see what the options are to make that. What was the word? To make it the same as state. State law, yeah. And then also recommend the city council to add some sort of backup power supply for security qualification, security planning.
Okay. Dennis first, I guess.
Okay, we had we had a motion. We have a second on that. Now, sorry, discussions over unless there's there wants to be a modification, Dennis.
I'm, Tori, I was very intrigued by your comment about the the streaming from the videos and the fact that it seemed pretty open ended when John responded. I'm a little bit concerned that it could be used, if it is open end, then then it could be used in ways we might not like to have. And so would you include, want to include your comment that you made?
I think that that might be better to be included when we issue the conditional use permit to to provide specific language in those. Would that be better or to include it on this? For like
If we have less specificity here, it's it is better to handle each at each use permit. And that gives us time to talk with our police team as well to understand their true intention with that.
That's a
and look at each one on a case by case basis.
To me, it's a kind of a two edged sword. If it's open, then it could be, the argument can be made either way. About why it should or should not be used in that in that fashion. And so I think having it locked down, I think would be a good thing.
So perhaps we could change the language to security footage would be accessible to the Atascadero Police Department upon request?
I don't know if we want, if we want to limit it that way.
Yeah.
Well, I'll come back to the planning commission for CUP and we'll get recommendations from the police chief by that time. At the CUP, we can certainly make those findings. Specific recommendations, but I don't know if we want to get too specific right now.
Can I chime in? So I understand like we don't want to punish people who have who have done their time and and paid back their debts as a society. And I I understand that probably the notion of the law here and and Brian can fully correct me on this is, I mean, usually criminology, the numbers are one third convict, one third, one third is thief and one third ends up actually being completely away from it. And I think their concept was they don't want to have a possibility of recidivism where, you know, you're almost setting it up where someone has a form of temptation. But with prob, I believe it's 47, a lot of things kind of got switched back. So we have this kind of weird gray area. But my concern here is is we're we're concerned about the police being able to actively monitor the system. So from what I understand, there's privacy concerns is kind of the gist I'm getting from it. But also we want to also look at removing these restrictions. So personally, I I would like to kind of have some input maybe from the police chief or maybe get their perspective on how other places are implementing things like this. Because it's not going to go away, but I also don't think putting in like every specific detail here, it might actually over overcomplicate it. I think when they're going for their additional permitting, that's kind of would be a way to take it up one thing at a time.
So is is anybody, anybody like to second Tori's original original motion that does not include the the video?
Just the section eight I and then the backup power for the security plan.
That motion has been made and there's been a second to that.
Do you second that, Dennis?
No, it has been sec already seconded.
I think Randy seconded it.
Oh, did Sandy, Randy second that?
No.
No, I was trying to chime in for commentary, Dennis, race at the same.
We're in discussion after the first and the second.
No, we didn't have a second. We just had the first. Okay, Victoria, you want to second it? Okay, thank you.
Torres, yeah, we got it.
Victoria, Tori and Victoria. We have a first and a second on that. Can we get a call on this item?
Yes, Vice Chairperson King.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
He's on, there he is.
This is for the generator and
And and eight I to look at options.
No.
No. Okay. Commissioner Schmidt.
No.
Vice Chairperson Brandon Ica.
Yes.
Motion passes three, two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be moving on now to the self-storage facility.
I need to, I need to say something here.
Okay.
So you've got seven commissioners, right? And three is not a majority of your seven. And I believe that you need a majority of your commission to take action. I can look that up, but that's my recollection on on the rule on that.
On a, because it's a municipal code amendment, Brian, or just on any action?
Well, it's a resolution, isn't it?
This is a resolution, yes. Interesting, that's the Yeah, that's a new one for me. I thought it was just the majority of who's present, as long as we have a quorum, but check that out. Or if you can.
I'll tell you what, why don't we do this? Why don't we go on to the next item? And I'll look it up. I think I've got the number memorized, but I don't want to spout it out here because I might be off by a number self. I'll I'll look it up while you're on your second item and I'll listen in as you go through your second item if you have questions.
We can come back to this if we need to, or how do we?
We we can come back to it, but I just want I just wanted to to flag that. So my advice is, let's move on to the second item. And in the meantime, I'm going to look up the rule.
Thank you.
Ryan, are you okay? Do we have to bring it back? After we're done with the second item, because the second item, I know we have a lot of people wanting to comment and it might take a while. So I'm not sure if it would be better to take a quick break and hear the answer instead of postponing until after the second item.
Well, it is going to take me a few minutes to look at it and I don't see a problem with going on to the second item. I mean, they've taken the vote. And when I heard what the vote was, I bell went off in my head. And so I need to to look it up to make sure that I answer the bell. In the meantime, why don't you go on to your second item? I don't see a problem with coming back to this item. We're announcing now that we're going to return to this item for potential further discussion later.
Great, okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move on to the self-storage facilities at 1150 Beo Camino and 11505 El Camino. We have any expertise on this item? Let's start with Randy. You're muted, Randy.
Thank you. Technical difficulties. I do have expertise. On my initial research, I went down the audio from the planning commission and then through the city council meeting, got to watch the video. So I reached out to a few individuals and tried to get as much information as I could. I did reach out briefly to talk to Mark Daras as he was, he had understanding of the designing aspect of it. I did reach out to former planning commissioner Josh Donovan. I did reach out to Susan Funk, but I just got her answering service, so I did not, I was not able to actually directly talk to her. And and lastly, I did reach out and contact Robert Fonsi. And other than that, it was just listening to all of the staff as far as the information had available.
Okay, thank you. Dennis.
I don't know if it's applicable or not, but I watch our local C-SPAN all the time. And I did watch the hearings on this project when it was brought before the city council before.
Okay, Tori.
Yeah, so I saw the first iteration of this project last September, I think it was. I have spoken to numerous people in the community. I don't know if I should list, do I need to list them all by name? V Pierce, Emirina Anchor, Jerry Tanamoto. And I spoke with the the owner's agent, the developer's agent, Francis Romero about the project. And then I also spoke with Susan Funk.
Okay, thank you. Victoria.
Yeah, I did have a meeting where I requested some information and got to talk with the property owner, Scott Newton, and his agent, Francis Romero. And then just a tertiary thing, I talked to a neighbor who is not in that zone at all or or neighborhood of the project, but he has family, friends that are in the La Paloma little cul-de-sac thing there and they they expressed some opposition, but it was more hearsay than it was talking directly to the neighbor. So talked with my neighbor a little bit about their their grief on it and comments within the last few years.
Okay. And I did serve on the planning commission when this first came through. However, I was out of town actually when I I lucked out, I guess. And I did have a a meeting with the owner's representative, Francis Romero this last week and we discussed the project, so. I think I went over everybody. And that, did you get all that information?
Yes, unless unless Commissioner McIntyre has joined us. Yes, I have all that information. Thank you. Yeah, so we'll just say again, Commissioner McIntyre, if you have called in, please press star nine right now and we will move you over to be a panelist. But I don't see a raised hand, so.
Okay.
Great. And then Kelly's going to give this presentation, but I wanted to say one word before we get going because it is going to be a lot of discussion from the public. We did receive a lot of emails in the last couple of days. I think all of those emails, unless we received some in the last couple hours, were sent to the commission. We will not have the time to read each of those emails tonight into the public record in their entirety. But we will read each of the names and we will summarize their comments. So I wanted to say that ahead of time when we get to public comment, that's how we're going to handle it to stay within our time constraints of public comment. But also people are able to call in and chime in and be and be a part of this hearing tonight. But anyway, Kelly's going to go through the project and the history and give you an update as to where the design is today.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Yes, we we, I don't know about all the other commissioners, but I did read through every single one of the emails that we did receive. So and they were quite, quite a few.
So Phil, Phil, if I could interrupt and apologize, but So Phil, Phil, if I could interrupt and apologize, but I found it faster than I thought it would. It's government code section. This is on our prior item. It's government code section three, six, nine, three, six. And it's relatively short, so it obviously wasn't written by a lawyer. I'm just going to quote it here. Resolutions, which is the first word, orders for the payment of money. And all ordinances require a recorded majority vote of the total membership of the city council. Now, you know, that's what the rule is for the city council. It doesn't say that that's the rule for planning commissions, but I'm not seeing any you know, section specifically on planning commissions. So maybe what I need to do is stop interrupting you and go back and see if there's one that deals specifically with planning commissions. But that was the section that I was thinking of, but let's, let's go ahead and continue with your item and I'll.
Perfect. Thank you, Brian. All right, good evening. So this item is for the mini storage project that's located on a double frontage lot. It has an El Camino Real and Viejo Camino address. A little bit of project background. There was a similar project submitted on this same project site in two thousand eighteen. It did go to planning commission and was approved at planning commission and then was appealed to city council where it was denied in two thousand nineteen. The the city council did make some very specific findings for denial as part of their resolution, which included a lack of neighborhood compatibility with the mini storage use and the surrounding existing uses. So then the project was resubmitted that with a slightly different footprint and a little bit different scale to the project, a little bit different mixture of access accessory uses on the site. And the DRC did review that project for architecture and land use compatibility in two separate meetings that were held. So the DRC did conclude that the architecture and site changes did make the project more compatible with the neighborhood in terms of increased aesthetics and landscaping. However, no census was reached on land use compatibility at that time. And they did refer the project to planning commission to make that determination. So the project is located towards the south end of town in the public zoning district. You can see there it's a double frontage lot between Viejo Camino and El Camino Real, adjacent to the Dove Creek neighborhood and close to Paloma Park. In summary, the project proposes about sixty one thousand square feet of mini storage facility. There are self-storage units and an accessory office that goes along with that. They've also proposed a community room as part of the project that would be able to be rented out and available to community groups. There's also a workshop as part of the development, a parking area to accommodate the mini storage and community room use in a total of five buildings on the site. So a mini storage does require a conditional use permit within the public zone. And what that basically means is you need to make findings to approve a conditional use permit. So conditional uses or uses that may be compatible, may be compatible with added conditions above and beyond our normal development standards, or may not be compatible based on the surrounding land uses. And so that's what we're looking at this evening. Some of the findings that have to be met are neighborhood compatibility and consistency with the general plan and the community vision. And we'll be going over the exact findings a little later in the presentation. So in terms of the public zoning district, our general plan sets forth a definition for the types of uses envisioned for that district. Our general plan states that public, the public facilities designation applies to parcels that house public or quasi-public uses such as churches, hospitals, government facilities, daycare uses and things of that nature. And then it has some corresponding zoning districts, which are the public and recreation zoning districts. This project is in the public zoning district. So within this district, we have a number of allowed and conditionally allowed uses. So some of the allowed uses include parks and playgrounds, temporary offices, school facilities, public assembly and entertainment. There's a use called collection station that sounds very scary, but that is actually like a collection facility that you would see in a shopping center parking lot. It's a maximum of two hundred square feet. It allows for contained collection of recyclable materials that are moved offsite to be processed. It also allows for some public utilities and some parking lots if necessary. And on the conditionally allowed use side, there are things such as healthcare services, RV parks, childcare centers, residential care facilities, transit stations, churches, vocational schools. And so those are uses, are types of uses that depending on their their magnitude or their scale may or may not be appropriate in certain locations within the public zoning district. So the building has stayed relatively consistent and designed theme to the previously submitted project. It has an agrarian theme with some barn-like accents, darker earth tone colors for the building faces. There's some metal ribbing on the interior storage buildings to help them look more agrarian. There are some two-story buildings towards sort of the the top end of the knoll of the site and then they go down to one-story buildings as they go farther south. These are just some images of the building design for you to look at and see that are also part of your packet. Here are the materials that the applicant is proposing. There are some retaining walls that are either part of the building or part of the site development pad. Those are proposed to be sort of a stamped block that has a natural tone as they will be adjacent to the realigned creek corridor and will be visible on the south portion of the site. So this is the currently submitted site plan. You can see there is a culvert that comes off of El Camino Real from some restored wetlands on the other side of the street that was done as part of the Dove Creek project. The water enters the site and they, the applicant is proposing to realign the creek channel and go through to the culvert at Viejo Camino. So majority of the project is on the northern portion of the properties. This one is a little bit hard to read, but we did have a lot of questions about what what does this project look like compared to the project that was previously submitted? So we can see that this is the remains, the development area here. And then this portion of the site here was proposed and as as part of the previous project for development and has now been eliminated and reduced to allow for a smoother creek channel realignment. So this is the proposed landscape design. We can see that there is ample riparian sort of restoration landscape opportunity along the realigned creek corridor as well as street trees and landscaping along the project frontages. It is important to note on some of our frontages that, you know, the right-of-way line is here and here on Viejo Camino. And so if we do require widening of those streets, those landscape opportunities do get smaller. I believe the project is conditioned to provide some parallel parking along Viejo Camino as it is one of our collector streets. And so some of that landscape will need to be pushed back towards the proposed fencing and buildings. And this is just sort of a close-up of that Viejo Camino frontage. You can see the right-of-way line and the proposed fencing. And so if the proposed parallel parking spaces move to the edge of the right-of-way line, there will be limited area for street trees and landscaping. In terms of signage, signage is allowed by our municipal code because it is a commercial use. However, the signage has a potential to face residential zones and existing residential properties. So we did include conditions on the project that all signage be non-illuminated and that it be to reduce the impacts to the neighboring properties at the project frontage. In terms of traffic, the project was reviewed for traffic impacts and there are some conditions related to Viejo Camino road improvements, including turn lanes into the project that would allow for 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 safe stacking without inhibiting traffic flow on Viejo Camino. So the mini storage is expected to generate about seventy seven trips per day. So those are trips over an entire day. And then the community meeting room is anticipated to generate approximately sixty eight daily trips when that room is in use. So we're not sure what the applicant intends on on how, what the frequency is for them using that space. But when that space is in use, it is anticipated to generate about sixty eight daily trips. So frontage improvements do include bike lanes, curb gutter sidewalk, some striping on Viejo Camino to allow for the turn pockets into the project. Again, that parking lane that I mentioned on Viejo Camino, we are on a collector road adjacent to multifamily residential properties and a park. And I think if anybody has been to the park during baseball or T-ball season, definitely some additional parking along the streets is necessary. And then we're also conditioning that we restrict access off El Camino Real because that street does have some conflicts and turning movements. And and that is allowed to be lifted by the city engineer should a project amendment come along that necessitate that in a safe and orderly way. So part of the project, as I mentioned before, does include creek realignment. The current development proposes to realign the creek around the edge of that development area. We do have some policies in our general plan about creeks and natural features. If you've been out to the site, the creek is definitely shown as a blue line creek. The biologists did go out and there's are some jurisdictional indicators for that that creek and that waterway. However, with the drought conditions the last few years and the use of the property for grazing, it's not a clearly defined riparian way with vegetation and indicators of that nature, although there is a fairly defined channel and path that the water flows in. So we do have general plan policies that require a twenty-foot setback to all creeks. It's intended to prevent flooding and also protect riparian habitat. So there's not much riparian habitat happening, but there definitely is some water and hydrology on the site that needs to be looked into. The commission can modify that creek setback, providing that certain findings can be made, that the development does not negatively impact flooding or riparian habitat. And that finding is included in your resolution should you make a motion to approve the project this evening. So the applicant did include natural vegetated slope as part of their creek realignment and ample vegetation for riparian restoration. There is a slight setback from the center line of the creek, but not, the twenty-foot setback is not maintained from the high watermark of the revegetated and realigned creek channel. So this is a section cut that shows the realigned creek. So you can see the natural bottom creek channel here with vegetated sides. And then that retaining wall that helps form the development pad is in this location here. This is just a little bit of information to help you know where that water is coming from. So these are a couple sort of forks of Paloma Creek that have headwaters a little bit on the western side of the city, go across the freeway, come through the Dove Creek development and then eventually go out to the Salinas River. So the property is outlined here. And then this is a more close-up view of that property and the FEMA map zones on the property. So the purple outlined in red is the actual floodway, so the path of the water. And then the darker blue is the hundred-year flood plain. So because the development will be impacting the actual floodway, they will be required to do a letter of map revision through FEMA to adjust the flood zone and the floodway. And that will necessitate a full hydrology analysis as part of that project and that permit and that agency approval. And the hydrology analysis based on local and state codes will need to show that the development will not cause any downstream impacts. So the flow of water after development occurs has to be equal to or less than what exists today. And then the floodplain has to be within that same area or less of an area on adjacent properties. So they won't be able to have any impacts on downstream or adjacent properties due to their development within the floodway and flood zone. I think we already talked about street improvements, but here it is again. So general plan consistency, there are a number of general plan policies called out in your staff report for review and they're included in the resolutions should you need them for your findings as well. Just to note a couple, in our land use, open space and conservation element talks about beautifying the city's primary entryways with civic gateways. This is at the most southern end of our city and could be considered a sort of gateway location into the city. One of our policies also promotes the transformation of El Camino into an attractive commercial and industrial area that provides long-term economic viability for the community. We also have goals about providing a sound economic base to sustain the city's unique character by developing a range of employment and business opportunities, retaining and expanding existing businesses and attracting new development and land uses that provide jobs and services to residents. We have policies about creekside development, which we touched on a little bit before. Some of our specific policies include not channelizing creeks and keeping them in a natural state. And then I did want to point out that in the staff report that we actually repeated eight point one point three as eight point one point four. So I did want to provide you with the updated language for eight point one point four, which is the city shall strongly discourage underground piping and unnecessary disturbance of creeks and streams and encourage the use of bridges and arched culverts. So I wanted to make sure that you had that revised language. And then, of course, we have our policy about creek setbacks as well. So in order to approve a conditional use permit, we look at six main findings and then there's an additional finding to allow the modification to the creek. In particular, the ones that are emboldened are the ones that are most likely areas of discussion for this project. In order to approve the project, the commission must find that all of these seven findings can be made in the affirmative. So we have findings about consistency with the general plan, meeting all of our zoning standards, not being detrimental to the health, safety, welfare of the general public, not being inconsistent with the surrounding character of the neighborhood, not generating a volume of traffic beyond what's safe for the road system, being in compliance with pertinent city policies and that onsite creeks and riparian areas will not be negatively impacted by the reduced creek setback. So findings for approval have to include all of these seven findings. If the commission were to find that the project is inconsistent with any of these findings, you need only make one finding for recommendation or making a motion for denial. Should the planning commission move to approve the project, we do have a couple of conditions that our city engineer wanted to be added in. One of them is that the community meeting space be limited to temporary use, not to exceed three consecutive days. That is to keep the traffic numbers low and ensure that we don't have a consistent daily user such as a school or something like that that's generating an additional volume of traffic. And then the city engineer also recommended that the drivable path over the sewer easement include appropriate design features to make sure that we prohibit any public vehicular access over that sewer easement area because it will be a slightly wider path and perhaps look look accessible to vehicles. So we want to make sure that that does not occur. So in conclusion, the planning commission has three alternatives for this evening. We have provided two resolutions, one for approval of the project and one for denial depending on how the planning commission can make the required findings. So we do have those two resolutions available for you this evening. The draft resolution B, which would deny the project should the commission not be able to make all of the required findings, will need to come with a motion that very specifically states which finding cannot be made and any evidence to support that. The planning commission also can continue the project to a later date if there's more information needed. And if you do request that it be continued, the staff and the applicant will need clear direction on what additional information you might need. So that does conclude staff's presentation. I know that the applicant's representative is available for questions as well when we get to that point. And I just also wanted to reiterate because we have a lot of phone-in users that when public comment is open, if you are a phone-in participant, you can press star nine to raise your hand and then we will allow you to speak. you can press star nine to raise your hand, and then we will allow you to speak. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Kelly. So we're going to open up for questions from commission of staff. And do you have any questions for staff and Dennis?
Yeah, in reading the, the email chains that were, that were provided, there's a lot of discussion that I saw about noticing requirements that some people had not been noticed with the writers felt needed to be done. There's a lot of also discussion about the previous project and this coming back. And so on both of those areas, is there any concern by staff about lack of noticing? And then is there any type of statute that says that an applicant cannot come back within a certain period of time with a similar type project?
Yeah, so our code currently requires a 300-foot noticing radius for projects that are not within our larger residential suburban zone. We actually did notice above and beyond that radius requirement, knowing that there was a lot of public and neighborhood interest on this project. We also noticed two people who were on our email list from the previous project. So we, we do believe that we have more than adequately noticed the project from our legal requirement standpoint.
Where is? Excuse me?
Oh, I would add that based upon our receipt of public comments, I would also emphasize it does appear that the word got out quite well.
Okay, where is Los Lomas?
Let me see if they're on that flood zone map. They are, they are quite a distance away. Los Lomas is up here, this neighborhood. Can you see that on the screen?
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought it was. Okay.
Couple thousand feet away, yeah.
Are there any ways of prohibiting, eliminating, limiting the type of storage? Like, I know in some cases, I don't know, right or wrong, some businesses have run out of storage facilities because they, they, well, they, they store their equipment there. They come there every day to pick up equipment and, and leave. Is it possible to, to limit storage activities?
You can actually put any kind of conditions you want on this, but when you put conditions on a project like this, you also have to think about, how can these conditions be enforced? Can we reasonably enforce that? And is that a reasonable, is a reasonable nexus to that condition based on the topics at hand? The, the one thing I'd be concerned about with a condition like that would be enforcement, whether we would really be able to control that in that level? And is that, is that really feasible? I think is the first thing that comes to mind.
Okay. On projects like Dove Creek and Los Lomas, were there similar type findings that need to be made about compatibility? Or like, for instance, on the Dove Creek project about the gateway? And it, it seems kind of puzzling though, though there's a lot of comments about the channeling and the wetlands area on the property. But it seems to me that when Los Lomas was built, they did, they had to get special permits to do what they did there too. So I, I remember on the previous hearing, a lot of discussion about the, about the gateway to the city. And I'm just kind of puzzled about that because I don't see necessarily the corner of Dove Creek right now being too invite of, inviting into the city. I guess that's more of a comment. With respect to traffic, is a storage facility, I, I, I haven't been in very many of them. It seems like the traffic is not very high. I'm actually surprised by the number 77 that you provided. But on, on the traffic scale, it seems like storage facilities would be far less than other types of uses. Is that, is that a right characteristic?
Yeah, so, so those traffic numbers are pulled from the ITE, which is the pretty standard. I, I think the applicant's representative had pulled some from a traffic study in a different area, and those daily traffic counts were actually a little bit higher. But we believe the lower number is appropriate for our analysis in Atascadero.
And then those from the ITE and also that were provided by the applicant, did the, does the, did the, does the ITE have different factors for different areas? Some areas are more urban than ours. And then the comparative traffic numbers that were provided, were they similar to a community like, or from a community similar to Atascadero?
I don't know if, if Nick has actually joined our webinar. If he's on the phone, maybe he could raise his hand and ask, answer that question. But maybe while he's doing that, I just wanted to touch on a couple other questions that you had. You had a question about anything in our code prohibiting resubmitting after a denial has occurred.
Yes.
And Ryan, if you see Nick, can you move him to a panelist, please? And we do not have anything on our code prohibiting that for conditional use permits. We do have a one-year resubmitting required timeframe for maps, but we have no code required limitation for conditional use permits. So they were able to resubmit as soon as they wish to. And then in terms of your gateway comments, yeah, our, our general plan, you know, specifies with a little star that the, you know, intersection at Santa Barbara Highway 101 is sort of the designated gateway area. And it's just a little bit vague on, you know, what that means for development within the proximity.
Commissioner Schmidt, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Nick DeBarre, City Engineer, Public Works Director. So the question I heard was, are the traffic counts similar for smaller communities versus urban or larger communities? Is that correct?
Does the IT distinguish between that and their, and their information they provide?
They don't. They, they basically have it as a unit trip generation. So if you have a single-family home, there is, you know, what is it, 11 trips per day that occur from a single-family home. So it doesn't really decipher between a rural or an urban area. So it's just more based on the use. So for many storage, it would be the same thing, including the meeting room as well.
So X amount of trips times the square foot, square footage?
Correct. It's, it's more related to the, the type of facility rather than the density of a, a community.
Just in general, there were some suggestions in some of the email about other use that may, might be preferred. I was a little surprised by some of it, but it seems to me there were suggestions of community needs such as markets or restaurants and stuff like that. It seems like those projects would generate a lot more traffic than this would. Am I correct in making that assumption?
Uh, yes, to a certain degree, yeah, we would need to analyze that. It would depend on their design too, and if there was a safe, you know, exit off of El Camino and, and where that traffic was routed to. But in general, a, a storage facility is less traffic than a lot of other more, you know, commercial retail uses.
Okay, thank you for now.
Jeff, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Any, but any of the other commissioners want to make a comment or questions of Kelly?
Um, so is it the city stance that this is, that the off-ramp there is can actually considered a gateway?
That's what our general plan says, yes. And the, the Dove Creek development was actually supposed to provide a, a city gateway, welcome to Atascadero sign along the freeway side. And for various reasons, that did not come to fruition. But that was acknowledged as part of that project in the past.
Okay. Um, I do have another question. Upon reviewing the, the city council's video from the last meeting, at about two hours and five minutes to two hour and eight minutes in, they mentioned that they, if they were able to do the water with it the way they wanted, that FEMA would actually remove that property from being in the floodway as far as on their mapping. Did city ever get any, any email or anything regarding that?
No, and maybe Nick can chime in again. But there is mapped floodway and floodplain on either side of the property across the streets, and it's a definite flow path of water. So I don't think it would be removed, but certainly as part of the hydrology analysis, they would be looking at what those water flows are and then appropriate mapping of those waterway and flood areas. And it's, it's, I guess, possible that it could get smaller depending on the water flow out of the culvert. During a heavy rainstorm, there is a lot of water flowing on that property, and I think we'll probably hear testimony from the neighbors to that effect as well.
And the reason I ask that is I can't really find anything as far as like solve where the height of the water line is. I know we kind of have a guesstimate. We are kind of in a drought. We haven't really had one of the storms where we're about a weekend where we're just getting pounded by rain, rain, rain. But, but you know, if FEMA had given anything that's like, you know, documented notice or anything like that, where they're stating something that's strong, it, it does kind of, it speaks volumes. So I, I just wanted to ask to see if that was made available to the city. I, it was just something that stuck out in my mind when I was listening to the city council video.
Yeah, I do think the FEMA maps include an elevation level, floodplain, an el, a topographical, on-the-ground elevation level. And so they will be looking at that with their detailed hydrology analysis if they move forward.
Kelly, I can hop in here a little bit too. Commissioner Hughes, one of the things that they, that we look at on one of these projects is hydrology and hydraulics. And one of the things that they're required to do is the flow downstream cannot exceed, you know, after they develop, cannot exceed the flow previous to development or right now. Also upstream, they can't, they can't block it up upstream. So they need to kind of deal with the water flow on their site. And then with regard to the floodplain, since they're going to be filling in part of the floodplain and changing that up, they'll have to work with FEMA and put in a, do a letter of map revision or LOMAR, as we call it. And then that'll be the official new mapping for the changes they make in the floodplain, if that makes sense.
Okay, so i- it's kind of open and ended in the fact that FEMA is going to be involved kind of after the fact, dealing with the, the changes of this.
Army Corps. Yes.
Yep.
During, or not FEMA, sorry, yeah, Army Corps.
Yeah.
You know, the mapping and also fish and wildlife, since there are riparian areas, they'll have to kind of satisfied, they have to satisfy all those federal agencies and state agencies.
Are there any other commissioners that have questions for Tori?
So something that kind of struck me, Phil mentioned in the last item, he said, "The public zone was not designed for commercial or industrial use." And yet this project is kind of falls into both of those categories. So I'm kind of interested in, and I know this came out with the last meeting, but why is mini storage included in this zone at all?
I think that's a perfect question, and I think we asked the same question when we reviewed this project the first time. And when the city council determined this particular land use isn't appropriate in this public zone or in any public zone of the city. And we've since contemplated removing it from the list of conditionally allowable uses from this district. Although we have not done that yet, but it is an awkward and unusual use to have in a public zoning district, given the description that is published in our general plan, land use element document. So it is a bit out of line. Maybe the planners at the time thought that, given it's a storage use that the public utilizes to store their personal belongings, that it belonged in that type of category. And it's, it's a difficult land use to place in the right category, if you think about it. Where is it best suited? Industrial zones, obviously, maybe our service commercial zones. Probably not the greatest thing to take up retail space land. You don't want it in residential land. So I think, yeah, it becomes one of those awkward land uses. But yeah, I think it's a kind of a perfect question, really. It's what this is all about is, is this land use appropriate here? Is this land use appropriate in a public district? Unfortunately, the discretion of the conditional use permit allows us that opportunity to evaluate all of those questions.
And then my other question was, do, do we have any other public use land in Atascadero that has like a similar, a similar CUP for something other than what we would typically think of as public use? You know, schools, churches, parks, things like that. You know, is there, is there another example that we could kind of look at in Atascadero where we'd be like, whoa, that's on public use land? I know, I didn't think that that would be public use. Is that?
I don't, well, go ahead, like.
I was just going to say, a majority of our publicly zoned land are our schools. The state hospital is publicly zoned land. Where we see privately held publicly zoned land is this area of town. And then the north area of town by the Apple Valley Development adjacent to the, the Ramona Frontage Road along the freeway. I'm trying to think of uses there, and I think that.
Just churches, there's just churches, and then there's the.
Woods.
Woods, Domain Society is there as well. Yeah, so there's nothing that really fits, you know, a similar, I mean, similar situation. Yeah, our only other privately owned public land is, is developed with churches. That's probably the closest thing you could have. And, and churches are really kind of in that public land use category.
Sure, okay.
A church doesn't need to be on public land, though. It could be residential too.
You're right, it can be.
Randy?
So I understand, you know, I've been through the area quite a few times, that there, there's a one housing project going, that was going on right around the back of Villa Camino and Santa Barbara there. Are there more housing projects or any more phases that are going to be done or populations going to be added to that area?
So when that project on the corner of Viejo Camino and Halcon moved forward, they rezoned as part of their application the land between their project and the Los Lomas development. And that rezoning allows for four dwelling units per acre. So it's not as intense as Los Lomas, and it's not as intense as what we see as the new development on the corner. But there are potential to add, I think, 15 or so houses onto those seven or eight properties that exist there today.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, seeing that, we are going to open this up to, for our public hearing. And.
Jeff?
Yes.
Sorry, I, I just have one question. I'm trying to formulate exactly. But basically, I did see it's public record that the applicant did apply for amendment to the general plan to look at high-density family, multifamily use on the parcel. And I'm just curious, like, how likely is that, that we could, as a city, do that amendment in a timely manner? And I guess when I say timely, within the next year or two.
Let me, let me try and respond to that question because right now, we have opened the door to collecting individual requests for updates to our general plan. We are approaching a citywide general plan update this year, which will commence this year and probably take almost two years to complete. During this time, we have asked people to submit their requests. They don't have to pay money to do that. They could. They can submit a written request to us, uh, to change their land use. We haven't evaluated this particular request yet because we're going to do that in conjunction with all of our requests at the time of our citywide general plan update. So I couldn't give you an answer as to how likely that is. That's going to be based on public testimony. It's going to be based on resources. It's going to be based on utilities. It's going to be based on traffic. It's going to be based on many, many, many things. But, um, if I were to take crystal ball and look at the situation, housing is a likely land use for some of these properties that are currently publicly zoned. We do have high density housing around these areas. And if that's a logical thing that our city council wants to do and our community wants to do, then by all means, it might be something achievable. But we're far from answering the questions whether it's feasible. And that request, along with the other requests, is going to take a couple of years from today's date to finalize those particular requests. So that's not something that's going to happen overnight. It's not something that's going to happen in six months. In order to update our general plan, we have to take in these requests. We have to look at our own citywide issues, our transportation issues, all of our policies. And then we have to develop and, and, and write an environmental impact report, which is a year long process. So it's a little bit of time. But the good thing is for folks that do put in these requests and they ride along on this general plan update that's citywide, it is going to save them substantial finance cost and environmental cost of doing it on their own. Because the city will be doing that proactively. So I'd encourage others, if they have an interest, to join that process to, to go ahead and do that.
That's a fair answer. I, I can agree with what you're saying. We don't have a crystal ball. Yeah, I just really wanted to highlight, I guess, that in the expertise communications I had, it was the, it, it is the intention, I think, of the applicant to, in addition to that mini storage development, also look at housing. So I wanted to follow up on, on that piece because I know like anybody, the developer has to work within the zones and what they are today, not what they think they are going to be, so.
That's, that's right. And that's the thing is honestly, you know, this, this property owner that we have here today with this use permit bought this property knowing that the zone was public. But I will admit that public zoning is fairly limiting for private land uses. And there are probably better zoning districts that are better suited for development of this site that could allow either other commercial or other high density residential uses.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Randy, we'll go back to you.
Um, just one last question. Um, did the property owner contact the city inquiring about this development before buying?
Um, I, oh, go ahead, Kelly.
Well, I was just going to say, I know he came in very early in his process. I do not know if escrow had technically closed before he came in or not, but he did come in early in his process.
Okay.
And Cory, Tori, did you have a?
I was just going to say, before we open public comment, because I know there's a lot, could we just take a five minute bathroom break? I'm sorry, I've been like holding it for like half an hour, but I thought this would be a good point to just pause for a moment and, and, and let that happen.
That sounds good. Well, with that, we will take a five minute break and we'll come back and open it for a public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Kelly, I just wanted to say, great job with all the tech work. Everything's been running seamlessly.
Thank you. We're sort of used to it at this point and then sometimes things go awry, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at this going, I couldn't picture trying to run all these interviews and interacting with two computers. It's like.
Yeah, definitely. It definitely takes a team and we've got John and Mariah there too, to help, to help us facilitate all of the public comments, so.
Oh, yeah, I was looking nice watching the chat and then we're people, if people try to call in and all this stuff, I'm just like, well, you're a musician or not musician, magician at that.
What time is it? T minus four forty-five.
Okay, do we have all our participants back yet? Tori, Victoria, are you back online? So are we just waiting for Victoria and Phil?
Looks like it.
So Phil and Victoria, if you could turn your cameras on when you're back on, so we can make sure we're all here. It's like we're still waiting on Victoria.
My camera was a little slow to come back on. I don't know why. It wasn't me. I've been here all along.
Oh. Your, your voice was a little garbled too on, on some of your comment.
Wonder why? Is it my voice okay now?
Yeah.
It is when you're closer to your camera, I think, but.
Yeah, let me get closer in. Hold this in a little closer. I was quite reflecting off my glasses too. Was that terrible? Let's take them off.
When you move your head around, it's kind of in and out a little bit.
All right, we'll get this, we'll get this straightened up here.
Well, we, before we get started, I saw our city attorney jump back on. Did he, do you have a, Brian, do you have a answer to our question?
Yes, I do. The answer is that the resolution failed because it did not get the required number of votes. It requires a majority of the total membership that applies to the city council and the city council may delegate powers to the planning commission as, as happened in a Tascadero, but they can't change the voting rules. So the, we would need four votes to pass a resolution. That doesn't prevent the staff from, uh, including in the staff report to the city council, um, a statement that the vote by the commission was three to two. So a majority of those present voted in favor, but they're I'll recommend that, that the staff report include a statement that, you know, this is not the sufficient number of votes for the resolution to pass. However, you know, it's a, it's a fact that three voted in favor and two against.
So to clarify.
Yeah, what we brought was a draft and then the council is actually approves the resolution, right?
Yes.
So it can be, so what I'm hearing, Brian, is it can move forward to the council. It doesn't have to be a majority vote to move forward. It moves forward, but it's essentially moving forward as a failed.
Yes.
Recommendation.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I'd use the word failed. Maybe I did, but it makes it sound like there was, you know, like it was a pass fail situation. It, it's just that there, you know, instead of seven commissioners, there are only five. And so, um, you know, you did, you didn't, you didn't get a majority of your total composition. So Phil, I'll work with you on the phrasing for the staff report. You can move it on to the council and you can indicate to the council what the vote was by the commission.
Is, is the vote analogous to a two-two vote then? What we had in the first item?
Well, I mean, that's one way to look at it, I suppose. It's, it's, it's no action. A two-two vote is no action. A three-two vote is no action either because it didn't, it wasn't sufficient to adopt the resolution. So it is no action legally, but that doesn't mean it can't be passed on to the council so that they're aware that, that the planning commission did consider it and then you took a three to two vote.
Thank you.
Well, uh, looks like we're missing a Tori, but we're going to go ahead and, and move on. While anybody, while we were waiting, was there any commissioners that had any additional questions of staff before we open up for public comment? Okay. Seeing done, we will open the public hearing. We'll first want to hear from the applicant's representative, Francis Romero, I believe she's on, so if we can get her in there and maybe we can allow her to screen share or something because I think she had something she wanted to show us.
Um, I believe Kelly has the presentation. It may work better if she's the driver. I'm, I'm open either way.
Okay, Kelly, do you have that?
Let, um, me see if I can get to that quickly. Okay, give it one more second. It's thinking about it.
The PDF might open quicker.
Let me see what we can do.
Success.
I think we're there.
Perfect. So I can get started and I'll just say next slide and that'll work?
Yes.
All right, well, good evening, Chair Van den Eyckhoff, Commissioner, staff and members of the public. My name is Francis Romero. I'm a senior planner with TW Land Planning and Development. Locke Soderquist, the project architect, is also logged in tonight. So should you have any design questions, he's available as well. Scott Newton, the project applicant, was unable to be with us tonight because he is a newly elected councilman in the city of Pismo Beach and he has a council meeting tonight. Service comes first. So he's in the hot seat tonight too, but in another way. Normally, the project applicant would take a moment to say hello. So I'd like to introduce you to Scott, uh, as far as the, him working in the storage space. Scott has been in the self-storage business for six years. He purchased the Moro Bay self-storage system four years ago and he built the Woodlands self-storage located in Napomo. and he built the Woodlands self-storage located in Napomo at Monarch Dunes. That's a trilogy development by Shay Holmes. He recently received county approval for a four-acre expansion at that facility next to some very expensive homes. Scott received some unsolicited letters of support from his neighbors and no opposition. His neighbors know from experience that storage does not affect property values and that the use is a great neighbor. Based on his Google reviews, Moro Bay has 4.6 stars over 19 reviews, and the Woodlands has 4.9 stars over 16 reviews. I share this because Scott is clearly a good owner-operator. And I did, of course, like every other project agent does, I prepared a presentation for you, but I've also actively listened to what staff has already shared tonight. And I'm going to do my best to kind of edit on the fly so that we don't belabor things. I know there are a lot of people waiting to talk with you about their thoughts on this. I realize that many of you are newly appointed planning commissioners, so welcome. And thank you for taking on the additional work of serving your community. I've been an appointed or elected official for over 20 years while working, so I know what it takes. And I also want to thank staff for their time and efforts on this project. I know it's been tough at times. Well, I don't want to dwell on the past. Only a couple of you were here when the planning commission approved the project in 2019. And I really thank those who took the time to go back, look at the records. I did not represent the project at that point in time, so I came on after that, that approval. So I'm going to make a few references though and try to provide some information about what has changed and provide some context. Next slide. This slide outlines the revisions that were made based on feedback from the community throughout the hearing process. All of you know that in order to facilitate orderly development, cities and counties rely on general plans, community plans and zoning, as well as the staff and planning commissions to judge projects by the standards while balancing legitimate neighbor concerns. Landowners and developers also rely on these documents. When Scott decided to pursue a self-storage location in Atascadero, he looked at the city zoning and purchased this parcel because self-storage can be permitted on the site. The purpose of the public zone is for public and semi-public facilities and institutions to provide necessary services to the community. We believe that this project does provide a service to the community. This property has had, has numerous constraints, as you've heard, and that's why it was for sale for over 10 years and fell out of escrow numerous times. Some ask, why another storage facility in Atascadero? And I have the answer for you. A market feasibility study was completed prior to Scott ever purchasing the property. The study demonstrated that 99% of the storage space in Atascadero is currently full. By not having self-storage space available, residents are forced to travel outside the city for their storage needs. Scott has several renters in Moro Bay who live in Atascadero. While it is beautiful in Moro Bay, a one-hour round trip is not only inconvenient, but it also causes negative impacts to the environment. By not having storage available, you limit those who have limited space, who may live in apartments, ADUs, rent a room. Maybe they need space for a few bikes, a kayak, camping gear, et cetera. And with self-storage, you can rent just about any amount of space that you need. Over 40% of Scott's current renters are commercial storage. That includes contractors who want to safely store supplies and tools so they're not stolen out of a garage or truck, business overstock, churches, youth sport leagues and nonprofits. Next slide. Our project is what the industry calls a class A facility. Class A facilities are common in larger areas but are starting to become the standard for new storage products of facilities. They are designed to enhance and blend with the neighborhood to be compatible. I also have a few slides to show various facilities in Atascadero. They are a stark contrast to this slide. Each slide to follow includes zoning, the permit required and the surrounding neighborhood type. You will notice that all of these facilities are all located next to a residential use. Based on their appearance, they clearly create a negative perception of self-storage. And we're going to go through these rather quickly. So let's go on our tour of Atascadero self-storage facilities. Next slide. This is the only facility, these two facilities are the only ones that are located in an industrial zone where storage is a permitted use by right. Next slide. The El Camino self-storage is a CUP in a commercial park. Next slide. The mini storage and downtown mini storage are also a CUP in the commercial service district. Next slide. Palomar self-storage is not even permitted in the commercial retail zone, so we don't know how it got there. Next slide. And the used store at mini storage is not permitted use in a commercial neighborhood zone either. So that's kind of a quick tour of what yesterday's storage facilities looked like. Next slide. So before we look at what our property is zoned for, please look at the site for just a moment. It is surrounded by high-density multifamily apartments. And based on comment letters from neighbors, there are over 300. I haven't counted them, so I'm not really sure. So I'm taking our public commenters at their word. Single-family homes, a church, childcare and daycare centers, a neighborhood market, a community garden and Paloma Creek Park. While we understand that some of our neighbors like to look at this vacant area because of the semi-rural country feel it provides them, it is not zoned for open space or rural resource, so there should be no expectation that it will never be developed. This unimproved site has a property tax value of about $250,000. Post-development, that would rise to approximately $9 million with a considerable investment from my client. We disagree with neighbor statements that this level of investment will somehow cause this area to deteriorate over time like an inner-city neighborhood. I have read every single comment letter that has come in, including those that came in later today. I want the public to know that we are paying attention to their concerns. Next slide. Many of the neighbors oppose this project, saying it's not the right project. So I would like to show you and your neighbors the uses that are permitted by right, and staff did a great job with that list, but we wanted to provide a visual. These don't require discretionary review. The pictures describe the issue of neighborhood compatibility far better than anything I could ever say. Most would generate far more traffic than self-storage. Next slide. These are also the examples of conditional uses that would be allowed with a CUP. Now, as I look at this slide, these uses to me look a lot more compatible than the last slide with the surrounding neighborhood. Next slide. We also want to highlight our green design elements that are part of our project. We have solar panels, drought-tolerant planning, porous concrete on the site, and underground rainwater storage to augment our landscape irrigation. In addition, we have cool metal roofing, concrete driveways and landscaping to reduce any heat island effect that development would have. Next slide. Kelly also had this slide in her presentation, so the one thing I just wanted to highlight here, to the right of the parcel, you see a yellow line that's kind of up and down, and then it goes off to the right. That is a trail that we're proposing that would connect the neighbors, the neighborhoods on El Camino Real and Viejo Camino, and would make the park more easily accessible. This is not required. It's something that Scott would construct to enhance the area. Currently pedestrians usually trespass through the church parking lot and cut through. So we feel this would be a lot safer option and a nice amenity. It would follow the real line creek for part of the walk. Next slide. I also wanted to show you the difference between the first submittal and what that was approved by planning commission and the current submittal. And Kelly did this in another way, and there was a lot of landscape and things going on. So I just want to show you what changed because some people say, well, this really hasn't changed. Well, it's still storage, but there has been a considerable change to the footprint of the buildings. Next slide. I personally like statistics rather than talking a lot, so I do have each of the buildings' square footage and building heights there for you for easy reference. But the changes from last time to this one, this time include a 31% reduction of the self-storage square footage. We went from eight buildings to four, and yes, some of those remaining four buildings were made larger. We also got rid of the nine-foot-high CMU walls that were of concern at the city council meeting and replaced that with six-foot-high black tubular steel, steel fencing and landscape. And we've got over 30,000 square feet of landscaping proposed for the site. So just a little history on the difference between the projects. Next slide. I wanted to highlight Building A because there seems to be a lot of confusion out there with the public. We initially wanted to provide a co-working business incubator space along with a community meeting room. After our DRC review and confirmation from staff that a rezone would be needed to facilitate a text amendment to allow the co-working space, we dropped the co-working space from the project description. It is not part of the project described in the staff report tonight. We are also not proposing delivery lockers. They are not part of this project. However, we wanted to provide something that the community could use, so the area-marked assembly room will be made available to the public for use during business hours for meetings. This is 640 square feet of meeting room, and it can accommodate a maximum of 91 occupants based on the parking available on site. However, if your commission believes that the traffic associated with the community meeting room is not acceptable, we would convert that area to self-storage. Maybe we could make it wine, a wine locker area, something specialized. That change would have virtually no impact on the traffic counts. And Kelly referenced earlier, we're looking at 77 trips a day for the storage and 68 trips for the meeting room. I have to be honest, I didn't realize that the meeting room generated that much traffic. And we are totally supportive of whatever you would want to do with that meeting room at this point. Next slide. From the very beginning, Scott wanted to provide a facility that would enhance the neighborhood. Our architect has created a project inspired by these agrarian images. We have many design elements that only serve as an aesthetic enhancement. They are expensive. I am sure you will agree that you have not seen a more appealing storage facility. The DRC has already reviewed this project and has, has said that the design and appearance are compatible with the neighborhood. Staff already showed you elevations, so I'd like to show you a couple of renderings because, I don't know, 2D is kind of hard to, to get a, at least for me, it's hard for me to get my head around things. So next slide. This slide shows a view from El Camino Real looking southeast at the west side of Building A and Building B. As you can see, the perimeter will be landscaped with drought-tolerant plants along the tubular steel fence. So I just wanted you to have a moment. In the left-hand corner there, we've got the little view icon so you can see exactly how it would look if it were built. Next slide. Also wanted to show you what was initially proposed versus what is being proposed today. We took a lot of care to reduce the massing and the CMU block wall around the edge, which was, as you, for those of you who saw the meeting, was, was a big issue. Next slide. This is yet another slide that shows the view from, lost my place here. Oh, that's, is that slide 20 from Viejo Camino looking southwest, and it also shows the reduction in building massing. We wanted the neighbors to know, we did hear their concerns about how it looked. Going on to the next slide. I'd like to, in summary, talk about concerns we've heard from the neighbors, and I would just like to try to provide information for people. The DRC did approve the new design in November. We are looking to provide a walking trail to connect Viejo Camino and El Camino Real. And I think staff already went over the street improvements that would occur as a result of the project. Next slide. We have heard a lot about traffic, and traffic with this particular use is pretty minimal. As an example that the engineer cited, if this were to be housing, a single-family home generates 11 trips per day. This entire project, storage alone, only generates 77 trips a day. The calculation I have there for 87 trips was taken from a similar project in Petaluma, but they also had outdoor storage, which we don't have. So I'm assuming that that accounts for the difference in daily trips. We have, we've got to use science when it comes to traffic. This is not something that should be driven by fears or by guesses. And we can rely on engineering for traffic numbers. Next slide. I have read many concerns about light pollution and flooding. The city mandates conditions of approval that do not allow light pollution. And our engineer has demonstrated that Dove Creek Storage will actually reduce the risk of flooding in the area. We cannot legally construct a project that increases the flood risk to surrounding properties. And I think the engineer and planning have both covered that sufficiently, so I'm going to move on, on that particular issue. And let's go to the next, next slide. And I, and I did want to touch on one other thing. Some of the letter writers have stated that if the project's approved, that the developer will just build whatever he wants. The developer has to build the plans that you approve. So I want to assure the public, and I'm sure Kelly can vouch for that. A developer can't just build whatever they want. It's not how it works. I have read reoccurring themes in comment letters about what happens at a storage facility. What I would like to state on the record is that the site is for storage. It is not for a workshop use. It's not for people to come there and do welding activities, to build cabinets. The lease agreement prohibits these units from being used in this manner. It also prohibits the storage of chemicals, flammable and explosives. As for the statements I've read stating that people will be living in the storage units or dealing drugs, or that the site will be covered in graffiti, I can only state that these activities are prohibited. And if they are occurring at other storage facilities, that that's a management issues. These activities do not occur at well-run businesses, and Scott has experienced none of these issues at either of his facilities over the last six years. The applicant cannot be responsible for problems that already exist at the adjacent park, as mentioned by some of the letter writers. The office hours for this project would be between the hours of eight and five, and access hours would be from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, not 24/7, is some fear. Many modern storage facilities no longer have onsite managers due to the implementation of technology. Between the use of individual electronic access codes assigned with each unit and cameras and motion detector sensors, this site is monitored 24/7. Over the six years that Scott has owned the other two facilities, he has never had a break-in or an issue with homelessness, nor has he ever needed to call the police or sheriff. And I would like to say that his facility at Monarch Dunes, he has 344 units there. And based on the daily access code counts, there are only 14 trips a day in and out of that site with 344 units. This site is currently planned for 600 units, which even at 30 units, 30 trips a day would be double what he's experiencing at a similar facility. So I think we're very safe with the 77 trip a day estimate that staff has, has put forth. Next slide, and my last slide. I just want to say that this project would be an asset to the community as well as a visual enhancement for the area and the neighborhood. We hope you will approve it tonight. We thank you for your time and we're available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Frances. Appreciate that. Okay, commissioners, any commissioners have a question for Frances? Okay, we will open it up to the remainder of the public. So if you are on Zoom, if you would raise your hand.
I actually have a couple of questions for Frances. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I did have a question about, because I know there's a lot of mention of the Monarch Dunes and that they were, it was expanding, but I had a question, was the self-storage there first or was the housing there first?
The housing was there first, and what I want to say is I worked as a consultant to Shay Holmes.
And what I want to say is, I worked as a consultant to Shay Homes for some of that project. So the self-storage came after the homes. It's in the industrial park, which is immediately adjacent to their higher-dollar-view homes that face west, and some of them catch glimpses of the ocean. So his neighbors are literally looking over the top of the storage facility.
Okay, because I was looking at the land use map in San Luis Obispo, and I apologize, I didn't have these questions for you when we spoke, but there seemed to be a very large green space between that park and, or I'm sorry, between the mini-storage and those homes. So I was just curious if that was still there, if there is still that barrier between the mini-storage and those homes.
It's actually a slope.
Okay.
I'm extremely familiar with the site. I have walked my dog there hundreds of times while I had a dog. So we used to actually walk through the industrial park area and where the homes are now being built, because that was one of the last areas where the homes have been building out at Monarch Dunes.
So those homes are above the mini-storage?
Correct.
Okay. And I was also curious, when you said that Scott did the market study for the necessary, or the needed, storage in Atascadero before he bought the property? When was that?
I was not on the project then. I believe it was in 2018.
Okay. Just because I have never, in my experience, I've not had any issues getting storage. And in my conversations with community members, I haven't heard of anyone not being able to get storage. And so those two things just kind of are conflicting for me. I even called some of the storage today, and everyone I spoke to had open facilities. So I just was wondering when that study was done.
Well, in 2018, there was a 99% occupancy rate, and then I
I mean, of course, things change, so I was just curious when that was done.
Certainly, and Scott does have people from Atascadero renting from him in Morro Bay.
Yeah. Oh, so I saw the two renderings, but can you give a little bit more detail on what the southern view is going to be like? Because there's not really anything there. It's just going to be open land, and I know there's going to be some mortar wall there. So could you just sort of expand upon what that's going to look like a little bit?
Well, we don't have any renderings for that particular view. And I don't think I'm the best qualified to do that. So if we have a way to bring Locke Soderquist in on this one, he could, he could address it better than I could.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Kelly, for bringing up the elevation.
I'm assuming this is Locke from LSA, so I just allowed them to speak.
Do you have the elevation, the southern elevation, Kelly?
Yeah, let me find out where that is. So this would be the south property line elevation here.
Okay. So it's metal fencing for approximately half, and then six feet of stone, and then six feet more of metal fencing on top of that?
So, right, go to the site plan, which does show the building setback from the fencing and then the wall along the creek channel. So there's a wall, I believe, on the plan, the fencing is offset from the wall here, and then there's the building.
That's correct. Did you have any questions for me, Tori?
I was just curious as to how that was going to look. There's going, so there's going to be, how tall is that retaining wall? And
Yeah, the retaining wall is four to six feet. It's articulated block. I think we have an image of that in one of the slides. And it's going to be densely planted in front with willow and other like waterway restorative plantings. And there will probably be some boulders in there too for articulation. And then above that, between the building along the fence, will be trees and landscaping to kind of soften the fence as well and screen the buildings from view.
Okay, and then, okay, and then the Viejo Camino elevation is sort of, is that in the middle part? Is that again articulated block? Or is that a building, the dark space in the middle?
That's a building behind a tubular steel fence with that landscape buffer again in front of it. So it'll also be screened. We did away with the buildings right on the property line, which was part of that previous submittal. And there was complaints about the, you know, the nine-foot articulated block walls being dominant. So we moved the buildings away from the property line, added the security fence along the property line, and not allowed us to plant on both sides.
Got it. Okay, I understand. Thank you very much. Those are all my questions.
Any other commissioners have questions of the applicant? Randy?
So on the previous meeting, it was essentially found that it was contrary to the immediate neighborhood development. And this is just kind of a general question. So how do you feel with this revised version? Can you explain how you feel your changes meet to answer those findings?
Are these questions for me, the architect?
Oh, no, no, no. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Okay. Well, I think that the scale of the project has changed. The massing has been significantly reduced. If I were driving by this because of the positioning of the buildings, because of the landscaping, I'd probably have to look twice to figure out if it was a nice apartment-home complex or if it was storage. I think that it's a, it's an accessory use to any residential use. Most of us have garages that we have things stored in that are not cars. I know that I've got an attic with stuff in it, and I've got a couple of storage sheds with stuff in it. So I see this as largely a residential use, but then from the standpoint of the commercial side, you know, a church doesn't necessarily have all the space to have their tables and chairs and excess things, or maybe their stage that they use for seasonal plays, the different theater companies in the area that have costumes and things to store, sports leagues. I mean, these are things that either end up in someone's garage or shed, or they end up somewhere that's in a central location where, when kids get to start playing sports again. And when they're not playing sports, isn't it better to have it somewhere that's secured? Then, you know, we see the sad stories that, you know, somebody puts their sport equipment in a trailer, and then the trailer gets stolen, and then the kids don't have their equipment. So the uses aren't, they're the same use that you would have at your own house, likely if you had the space and the security to do so. And for those that have downsized, or, you know, we have a lot of apartments in this area, I think that one of the letters from Max Zappo was saying that, you know, he's got he's got trouble finding storage for all of his tenants that he has. He has tenants at his apartments, and they're maxed out with where they can put their stuff, and that storage is a need. So but getting back to your question about the appearance of this project, I'd be thrilled to death to live next door to it, to be really honest. I mean, I've, it's much more attractive than the one up at Monarch Dunes, to be really honest.
Okay, any other commissioners have questions of the applicant? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Francis. Appreciate it. Okay, seeing that, we will open it up to the public for comments. Looks like we have a couple of hands up. If you are on a phone and would like to make a comment, if you could put, type star line, and Brian will bring people on us in order.
All right, first we have Michael Latner.
Okay, let me just remind you, you have three minutes to make your comment. And then we may, we probably won't answer questions right away. We'll bring it back to the commission after to answer questions. Thank you.
Great, well, thank you all. I will make my comments fairly brief. There's been a lot of discussion of aesthetics and a change in the look of the development. But fundamentally, the use of this land is not changing, and no amount of trees or aesthetics will change the compatibility of the use. To put it quite simply, regardless of traffic, regardless of all the additional concerns, this community does not want a storage unit in our neighborhood because it doesn't bring value to our neighborhood, because it violates the vision of our neighborhood for those who've made an investment here and lived here for many years. And I'm not one to pound on zoning laws. Indeed, we could get rid of the zoning laws, but this is not a proper use for this neighborhood. And the community doesn't want it, and you're not going to impose this on us. So I'll be very brief in just discussing what needs to happen. If the applicant wants to change the use, I think that that would be phenomenal. And that's obviously something that's being considered. This neighborhood welcomes development. We welcome more housing. We welcome commercial use that will add to the value of the community, real commercial use that would be useful to to the residents for retail commercial purposes, if that's something that could be done. But nobody wants this storage unit, and it is simply not compatible with the use of our neighborhood. And it's not compatible for Atascadero's gateway, and that actually means something to us. For those of us that live on the south part of town, we want this to be a welcoming, inclusive community. We don't want to send the signal that this is a place to dump your crap. And then that's what you're trying to turn this neighborhood into, and it's simply not compatible. Again, there are many other uses that could be, that this land could go to. But I'm certainly not alone. I speak with the majority of the community that we are not going to have this imposed on us. And frankly, the applicant, the disingenuousness of the last presentation, when they personally attacked a sitting council member for opposing this development, makes them frankly untrustworthy, in my view. So I'd like the planning commission to consider that and to consider the voice of those who've already invested in this community. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael.
Next, we have Brooke Stair.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm a local resident. I live on Patria Circle, just north of this development. My wife and I have a dog, and we walk the streets every day in that area going down to Paloma Creek. And we're in favor of the project. We think it's aesthetically pleasing. It doesn't have much noise or traffic and the other new nuisances that come with other development. And there would be less street parking, but it will provide street parking in the sidewalks that we want. So we urge you to approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooks.
Next, we have a phone caller whose number ends in 1092.
If you could please state your name when you come on.
Hi there.
Hello.
Hi, my name's Rob Fell. I live on La Paloma Court. Lived here since they built the houses. A couple of things I want to touch on real quick. If FEMA rezones the flood zone, if you have a mortgage on your house, everybody will be required to have flood insurance, which we never had to do before. Getting to the Monarch Dunes situation. Monarch Dunes is on a golf course. Those homes are nice and expensive homes because they are on a golf course. It is also surrounded by auto wrecking yards, but it's out in the country. It's not in a city development. It's out in the middle of nowhere. The storage units of not having any openings, the last time we did this, we had people talk for us, saying they had lots of room, lots of openings. So I don't really believe any of those numbers at all whatsoever. The city council deemed this not, it doesn't fit in our neighborhood. Nothing has changed. To use the term, you can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. It's still a storage unit. I don't believe it belongs in our neighborhood, and I know everybody in our neighborhood doesn't want it. Thanks for listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Anna.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Anna King. I have lived in Atascadero most of my life. I currently live on the property and have known Scott before he purchased it. I think it's an excellent plan. I have lived in Bordeaux Apartments when I was much younger and did not have any storage. I look at where I live and see that I'm surrounded by houses and I'm surrounded by apartments and think that it will be beneficial. I don't want to see 150 or how many apartments they want to put into these two lots. I would much rather have the beautiful storage unit. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
And next, we have a, it just says call-in user, so I think it'll prompt them on their end if they could state their name.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, my name is Bill. I'm a resident off Viejo Camino, and I want to express my strong disapproval of this project. I want to thank the City of Atascadero and the City Council for their maturity and responsibility to disapprove this project before. I would like to address three very quick succinct issues on this project. Number one is hydrology. According to the study reported by Michael Brandman and Associates, draft for the record, Draft EIR 36220001, Section 305, the United States Department of Agriculture Soil Services indicates that the Atascadero soils comprised of Arnold Blummy sand, nine to 13% slope, you know, on and on and on. Basically, it's going to cause a shed of 1.99 million gallons of water per hour on a downpour, which will result in a downstream impact of excessive damage. I also want to address the displacement of wildlife. And also, the footprint, as far as landscaping that they have established, is ridiculous. It is changing azaleas for, you know, whatever. Their general plan has not changed. This is not compatible, that thankfully, the City of Atascadero has denied. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
So this is our last caller we have right now, or the last person with their hand raised at this point. And this is the number ending in 8168.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name.
My name is Janet, and I
My name is Janet and I live on La Paloma Court. And I actually was just going to address two of the findings, but the storage occupancy has been brought up a couple of times, so I did want to address that. Kind of piggyback a little bit on what Chairperson King had brought up. In 2019, when we were first notified of this this project, I personally went out and spoke to the majority of the current facilities, storage facilities here in town, met with the managers to get statistics to try and find out if another storage facility was even necessary or needed. And basically what I was told is that the maximum occupancy is between 94 and 98% and drops considerably with the Cal Poly fluctuation when they're in season to 91 to 93%. So like Chairperson King, I disagree with those numbers a little bit. So I'll let it go at that. The the real reason I wanted to speak was regarding items, findings four and five. The mini storage facility is not consistent with the characteristics of this neighborhood, which consists of parks, community gardens, churches, and residential properties. So it is not consistent. I mean, everybody's all, everything fits in, but it's not consistent. And then regarding finding number five, the current amount of traffic on Vie Camino is already at a pretty high capacity with the public and school bus transportation, residents, you know, commuter traffic during the high times of commuter hours, activities at the park, activities at the church. Adding 77 approximately plus trips a day to the facility goes beyond the normal traffic volume, which is noted in the finding. It says it goes beyond normal traffic volume. So adding this little bit of traffic will will increase the traffic and I think be a big problem. So anyways, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your consideration and allowing me to voice my concerns.
Thank you, Janet.
And we do have another caller. I believe this one is 7601. Looked like you, oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, can can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Clyde Snyder. I live in the neighborhood. I walk down to the park a lot, virtually every day. I've spoken a couple of times, both at the previous planning commission as well as the appeal from the city council and agree wholeheartedly with the decision of the council there that it not need the findings to be an appropriate development for the neighborhood. There was comment that it would, no matter how nice it looked, it would open the door to similar types of light industry RV storage, which is permitted under the plan. Hydrology is a huge concern in that area. I know the bridewells that live in the Colony House expressed concerns all along with that over the increased danger of flooding. What was not talked about in the representation was the cut and fill involved the know that the geodesic dome house that is built on would be taken down. You would have hard surfaces there that are going to lead to more water runoff during our heavy storm cycles. The hydrology, in order to fit any kind of development in there, that that cut and fill needs to be done. You know, the landscape was thousands of years in the making. The reason that that property hasn't been developed is that it's it's, you know, Mother Nature is telling us that's how our water gets down to the Salinas River. Although it's not zoned for green space, that to my mind is the ultimate best use of the area. Also, you know, we had more presentations. This is like, why are we here? If you remember that, this is version two. We have a lot of glossy renderings with mature landscaping. You can't, you know, tell that it's a storage unit. You have traffic considerations. No matter how appealing it may look from a presentation point of view, we all know that's not what real life is going to present us with. Revenue, okay, so I don't know if I heard correctly. Ms. Romero said there's going to be, there's now $250,000 of property tax on that property. I doubt that very highly. And she said that would go to $9 million dollars with a unit like that up. I know there's an increase in commercial property taxation as opposed to the, I guess, residential zoning that's on there now. But this does not bring business improvement to the area. For those who might be interested, go to Scott Newton's Facebook page on the development. At one point last summer, there was pictures of apartment units going up there. It just, he seems to want to do everything necessary to get this approved. As some of you may know, public storage units, when the loans are amortized, is a very lucrative business. 30% return on investment. So Mr. Newton has found a good avenue to become a wealthy businessman. More power to him. But in order to accomplish that, he wants us to dismiss any consideration of what and how that land should be used. And I would submit to the planning commission, you have a precedent set forward by elected members of the community, the city council. You're all appointed members. And unless and until there's a convincing case that this development, which will not bring jobs, I think each unit provides $2 a year to revenue to the city. It gets no sale tax from the property. So this is a project in search of a shoe horn to squeeze it in that that development. Every element is not worthwhile and will detract from the future of the community, from its appeal to to people traveling into and looking at potentially moving to our community. We want it to be a place of beauty and nature, not random development. Thank you.
Thank you, Clyde.
And next we have Matt Kay. Matt, if you're there, you are muted. We cannot hear you.
I'm muted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. So I tried just to listen and not partake, but there's a lot of personal attacks against the applicant tonight. I've lived in Atascadero for seven years and seen very little development in this city. I think that people need to understand this land's going to be developed, whether it's a storage unit, housing complexes, or anything else, whoever buys it, if he decides to sell it or it's not going to stay a vacant lot. It's going to be developed. It's going to, you're going to lose your view. You're going to lose your pretty walk. Either way, it's going to be changed. The city needs to change. It's going to change. I think he's done a lot of work and been able backwards for this city to show how it can improve. And how, what he can do to make this project better every time he comes to the board. I don't understand why there's such a fight against this. Maybe people really don't want their house to go down. Maybe they're afraid of that. I don't see how it can go down any farther when this is one of the lower springs cities in North County, in the Central Coast, South Subispo County, if you will. So I I'm in favor of the project. I say change is good. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Matt.
And I'm not seeing any other hands right now. If you'd like to speak again, raise your hand if you're watching on the computer or press star nine if you're calling in, if you'd like to speak. But I'm not seeing anyone else.
All right, maybe with that, we should move on to the, just a quick discussion about the emails that were received. See if our, if Annette is ready to go through those briefly.
So I'm just going to give you the the names of who wrote, I think I'll do batch one. Kelly, do you have batch two? And I'll just go ahead and just kind of give you a brief synopsis on who wrote these letters. So the first one is from the Anchor family. And they are residents of Los Lomas and are writing to oppose the planned storage. They said it's a business unwanted and that we already have far more storage units than are necessary. This next one here is from Colleen Pans. And she says Atascadero doesn't need an eighth storage unit. She believes this one will destroy the wetlands, increase traffic and parking problems, and increase light and noise pollution. And it's not within the community character. And then she's also the one that has attached some pictures that were sent to you as well. This one here is from Justin Crawford. And he is submitting his opposition for the plan. It's not consistent with the neighborhood, which is predominantly housing, parks, churches, and daycare. Also, traffic issues is a problem. We have this one from Kathy Lemoine, who also opposes this project due to the impact of increased traffic and the types of vehicles that will be accessing the storage units, such as moving trucks, trucks with trailers, et cetera. And this is a poor plan for the neighborhood and she and her husband oppose the approval of it. She also has concerns about the wetlands and rain. This one is from Carolyn Lee, who lives on La Paloma. She also opposes this. And she wants to know why Scott is allowed to have another try at this project because the city's council decision was to deny it and she has written quite a bit. And so she's also opposed. There's a letter here from Christian Morano, who is in opposition to the storage unit. And basically, it's incompatible with the neighborhood. And she will be probable negative effects would be the loss of neighborhood and community character and decrease the natural appeal of the park where many children and families play. Next one is from Steve Maloney. And he also says he does does not think we need the structure in Atascadero and it will have a negative impact on property values. Next one is Kristen Olson. She would like the commission to stop the approval of the storage unit due to safety concerns. Also, the traffic flowing in and out onto the street causing many challenges. This is from Five Peers. She is in opposition or she says our neighborhood is the southern gateway to Atascadero, where we have parks, sidewalks, walking trails, and green belts because we enjoy the outdoors and an active lifestyle. Vance Ray is also in opposition and thinks that will be inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood and surrounding area. This is Rosalyn Joe Randkour, who is in disagreement with the storage unit for several reasons. And she says it's the wrong business for the neighborhood and it's bad for the environment. And she's worried about the flooding in the area and the runoff. This is from Joe Schmidt. Property is located in an area that is in a gateway to our city. And he is wondering how the city's own land use element is being violated with the use of this public facilities zoning. This one is from Susan and Eric Sparling, and they're writing in opposition. The additional traffic from this will be undue danger to families who frequent the park, wait at the bus stops, and walk in the area. This one is from Carolyn Tobin. Carolyn is vehemently opposed to this project and has been voted down and wants to know why it is being brought up for a vote again because she feels nothing has changed. Wong Wang is writing. He's a resident of Los Lomas who opposes the project not compatible with the surroundings, which includes parks, churches, apartments, and open space. And it affects traffic and safety. And then Max Zappus wrote a project in support. And he said it's a tough decision for planning commissioners. He thanked everyone for reviewing this. But he also thinks that will add to property values and says that denying this project will send a clear message to the real estate development community that the city's approval process and decision makers are unpredictable. And that sums up batch one. So.
I've got that too, which is a little bit shorter. So this is from Scott Head, and he writes that they live in the Los Lomas neighborhood and are eager to see a commercial development that provides services to the residents, such as grocery stores, restaurants, and other retail commercial, but do not see a need for an additional storage facility and feel that it's a more industrialized type of use. The next one is from Stephen Davis, who writes in opposition to the project and believes that there are further environmental concerns that need to be looked at, such as air quality, biology, water quality, and land use. He's got a long letter. Let me make sure. He's concerned about hours of operation. He's concerned about lighting and concerned about security and use of the workshop space and concerned about traffic impacts. The next letter is from Steve Maloney. And he believes that the structure would be a blight on the neighborhood and does not support the project. He believes that it violates the zoning. This next letter is from Janet Murieta. She is opposed to the project and does not believe that the facility meets the required findings for approval, specifically findings number 145 and the added finding related to the creek setback. The next letter, get to the bottom, is from Bill Murieta. And he writes in opposition to the project and believes that the use remains incompatible with the neighborhood regardless of the changes being made. And has some concerns about hydrology on the site and impacts to wildlife and traffic. And believes that the minimal changes do not change the neighborhood compatibility. And the final one that I have is from Jessica Sohe, who does not support the project, believes it is inconsistent with the surrounding area and does not contribute as a welcoming gateway. And believes that it does not align with Atascadero's commitment to doing away with random haphazard building development in Atascadero. She is also the owner of Holiday and Express and believes that this is a more scenic route and gateway to the city and that this use does not align with that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Annette and Kelly. Are there any additional participants that would like to make comment? This is the last opportunity. If you want to raise your hand, otherwise we will be closing of a comment. There's one more. Francis.
Well, thank you. I'll be brief. All I can say is that if 77 trips a day are not tolerable, there is no use that will ever be acceptable on this site. It is approximately four acres. And if it were to be rezoned for housing that the city is in dire need of based on RENA allocations, even at 20 units an acre, that's 80 units. At 11 trips a day, maybe a little less for multifamily, you're looking at 800 daily trips. So I At eleven trips a day, maybe a little less for multifamily, you're looking at eight hundred daily trips. So I just want to do a little math here because seventy seven trips a day and the distribution at five AM peak hour, six AM peak hour trips, which is three cars going in and out at the AM peak hour and roughly ten PM trips, which is five cars going in at peak PM hour. If that level of development is not tolerable, there simply isn't anything that will ever work on this site. I think that a lot of the effort that's gone into this project has been pretty much ignored by the public. Porous concrete and all of the the things that are actually on our plans that we would be required to do with the help of licensed certified professionals and under the the care and the regulatory compliance of the city as well as Army Corps. So a lot of the fears about what's happening with flooding and that are are substantially addressed for this or any project. And anything that is developed on this site will likely cause many of the same comments to occur regardless whether this was a rehab facility, a church, all of these are conditional uses. So I just just want to say you've got a tough job ahead of you tonight and I'm glad I'm not on the dais tonight and you guys are. And thank you for your time. We do appreciate the fact that there is as much interest in the project as there is, whether it's positive or negative, but with my experience over time, people that are supportive or happy with things generally don't come out in the same numbers that people who are opposed. So thank you so much for your time. And we look forward to your decision.
Thank you, Frances. Okay. With that, we will go ahead and close the public comment portion and we'll bring it back to the planning commission for discussion. Dennis, you have your hand up. Make sure you unmute yourself.
I'm wondering the effect of the information that Brian shared with us this evening. We had the vote before. I mean, for I'm wondering if we should be voting on this tonight or kind of what can we do with respect to the information he provided?
So I don't know if Brian is still there, but I will say that the previous action was a recommendation to city council. And this action is a final action. So you, if a motion is made, I believe you will need to reach a majority of the total council members.
So for at least four.
Is is this a result? Is there a resolution associated with this?
Yes.
Yes.
There's Brian.
I'll just say what Kelly said.
I'm just wondering if we should with only five of us here, whether we should chance it that it might not get the the needed votes or or should we move on instead of send it to the city council or wait for other members to come?
And I think we just need to see.
I think we need to have a discussion, see what
Yeah.
Discussion.
I we can answer some of the questions that came up.
Let's do. Let's do that. Kelly, were you writing them down?
I did have, yes, a couple of the more notable questions written down. It seemed like there were concerns about the flood zone still. So I think as we stated before, our city regulations and FEMA regulations, while they're changing the floodway and the flood plain on the property, they are not allowed to affect in a negative way any downstream or adjacent or upstream properties. So that will be part of the hydrology analysis and review process to make sure that that flood plain does not change on any properties surrounding this property without any sort of permission to do so. And so there should be no change in insurance requirements on properties that are not this property. We also heard concerns about hours of operation. The applicant's presentation did include some limited hours of operation. I think it's important to note that we do not have that included in the resolution for approval this evening. And so if the commission was concerned about that, that would need to be an added condition of approval. We did hear about the number of potential residential units on the property. We haven't seen a residential development proposal, so we don't know. You just purely based on a high density zoning, you could potentially get up to close to a hundred units on the property, but because of the environmental considerations, it would likely be less than that.
Can I just make one further question on that? Because if the public use is zoned for single family homes. So as it's currently zoned, how many single family homes could be put on that property?
So the single family home requires a conditional use permit and there could be one per property.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, but thank you.
That's okay. With the new ADU laws, of course, you could also do some accessory dwelling units. But that would just be one of those per property as well. And then we heard about some lighting concerns. We do have municipal code standards to prohibit light spillage off site and to make sure that lighting is at appropriate levels. We have had conditions on some projects adjacent to residential areas in the past that required. I guess there's a new lighting style that has a motion sensor attached to it and the lighting is very dim unless there's motion and then it brightens. So that could be added as a condition if there were concerns. And then we heard some concerns about displacement of wildlife. There was a biologist that was part of the project applicant team who went out onto the site and did not see any evidence of identified special species on the site. So that was the conclusion from the biologist report. And that covers what I heard. If you guys heard some additional concerns, I'm happy to address those as well.
One of the concerns was regarding traffic. And I think Frances addressed that pretty well. So the amount of traffic generated by this.
It's in general a fairly, the mini storage in particular is fairly low traffic. Depending on the amount of use of the community room that could generate additional traffic and and likely traffic all at concentrated periods of time, just based on how community rooms are generally used. We do have conditions of approval for improvements to Viejo Camino that should accommodate the number of trips anticipated.
There were a couple of comments about adding value to the community and revenue. I am sure you don't have the property tax information in front of you, but does $250,000 currently on that property seem right for empty land?
Probably the property value.
Yeah, property value and the existing.
Okay.
I'd be the value of improvement in property, yeah, based on the the prior assessment. And I don't know, you know, to what extent those issues weigh into the use permit findings that we need to bear. And that's what we should be focusing on is that set of findings. And whether we feel we can make or not make all of those findings.
I don't know about my other commissioners, but for me, most of the technical things can be addressed. It really comes down to the same thing that the city council made their finding on was that it was just incompatible with the neighborhood. That seems like the number one. The number one item.
And I don't think it just has to do with whether the neighborhood wants it or not.
Right.
You know, I try to think about in five or 10 or 15 or 20 years. If that mini storage is there, are we still going to want a mini storage there? Will will it still be useful? Will it still be? You know, compatible with the neighborhood? I mean, it's totally hypothetical, but that's one of the things I've been kind of thinking about and.
What were the find? Can you please let us know again what were the findings that the city council made to reject the?
Yes. I that was made by the city council and the evidence to support that finding. So they found that the proposed use is inconsistent with the character of the immediate neighborhood or contrary to its orderly development. And their evidence was that the proposed mini storage project is surrounded primarily by residential parkland, childcare facilities, churches and a seasonal creek. A mini storage project. Sorry, I've got something in the way. And use is incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood and is a departure from the established land use pattern. It is also contrary to the orderly development of the immediate neighborhood.
I mean, I feel like none of those facts have changed.
So what's really hard about this one is, I mean, all feelings aside, I mean, everyone's definitely highly passionate on it. It still goes down to the fact it's a conditional use permit and it's got to meet all this criteria. And that being said, you know, I start looking at a general plan of how can I apply what, you know, our basic guidelines are right now. And I look into the land use and the open space. And one of the biggest things is preserve residential neighborhoods. And when a neighborhood's coming out and this much support one way or the other, I gotta say, I gotta listen. And it's definitely something that I know we want to recognize the developer developer here and what they're going through to try to make a what they feel is better. But ultimately, are we preserving the residential neighborhood? That's a question I have.
Yeah, I agree with Randy and that's basically what I said last time. You know, and I applaud them for their efforts in making it pretty, but you know, it's still basically industrial slash commercial use in a public zoning land and in a residential neighborhood and even with the addition of the community room, which is great, the fundamental use of it is mini storage.
Um, I have a question. I mean, one of the things we want to look for is long term economic growth. Actually, once this is built, it is close to self managing. You may need what one or two bodies to really manage this. And so it does have a pretty quick cap point. I mean, we're gonna, you're gonna have the initial uncertainty of all the people working. But it caps out really quick and I wonder if that's best for this area.
I mean, you could say that it supports other businesses by giving them storage facilities, but at the same time, you know, a lot of those other businesses are going to have primary places to store their stuff. I mean, not all of them, obviously, as Francis said, but.
I see Dennis.
Yeah.
I find it, I find it odd that, you know. Business buildings, markets, restaurants, how are those compatible with with the neighborhood situation? There is, I mean, there is the the discussion that this use is mini storage. These are residential. Those are obviously different, but the arguments that have been made are the same argument you're going to hear for any project that's going to be brought forward there. I I know the example where, well, it's a sterile bay in Cayucas that people came out and grows about that project and now it's a state park. And so the same impacts are occurring, but it's just a kind of a different use. For me, I live where I live in the community, people race up and down my street every day. Some of these people who we've talked to race up and down my street every day. To me, having a nice quiet facility like the mini storage, that's compatible because I want to live in a quiet neighborhood. I don't want to live in a neighborhood where there's lots of cars that are constantly driving and making noise and stuff. I just, I I can see the the difference between the use, the two uses, but in terms of what I think I would rather live with, I would rather live with the mini stores because I, my experience is is that they're not that demanding on on noise, on light, on anything. They're very, they're not used at all hardly. And that would be preferable for me.
Victoria, we have a hook from you. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'm just listening to the commissioners, mostly because I'm very torn about this project. And I it seems like within the last four or five days, I've felt strongly one way and then I've been able to really be open minded to the the other way and I'm I I hear Dennis's last comment about you know, what the concerns are with a lot of the opposition with the neighbors. And yet there's a little bit of cognitive dissonance of like what this project could do to benefit the neighborhood as well as far as like less traffic and it's not as noisy as, let's say, the whole public zoning area got re amended with the general plan and it was all multi use and we're going to stick tons of high density apartments in the whole thing, not just part of it. I don't think that's what the neighbors would want either. Even though that's an actual real need more than I think storage. But the need isn't necessarily what the neighbors are after. I think the biggest comment that rang in my head was Clyde Snyder saying that green space is the ultimate best use. I had also talked to the agent and they say, well, yeah. And that won't pay the bills. So again, I'm caught because I don't, I feel as though if we are to approve this with any kind of added conditions, we're we're seen as the bad guys almost for the neighborhood. So that's that's where I'm personally at on a human level.
Yeah, I I understand from from my perspective is, you know, maybe if you know that I'm a registered engineer, I've worked for public agencies for for two decades and I've seen these kinds of projects come through. And although I don't know that I would want, I don't know how I feel about many storage in my neighborhood, a lot of the the concerns are actually it would be a lot worse if something else were to go in there. I mean, seventy seven trips a day is very little for any kind of anything. If we were to put a restaurant. If we put apartments in there, high density apartments go in there, say, it could be fully developed with a hundred units, you're looking at a thousand cars a day instead of seventy seven. So I'm I'm really, I'm really quite torn on it as well. And, you know, a smart businessman is not going to sink money into something that isn't going to make money for him, you know. Obviously, I believe that Scott probably did his due diligence and he wouldn't be spending all this time and effort if there wasn't a market for this type of of item. But I really feel for the for the neighbors, you know. I'm not sure how to proceed, how we, you know, come to a different conclusion than what the city council did. Are our findings going to be different based on those same those same findings that they have?
Well, there is the component of how they're going to put in that trail, the walkway, that seems like it has nothing to do with the self storage. That's completely for the neighborhood. I like what Kelly said too about adding conditions that we should consider of limited hours operation and then also the new kind of lighting, the dinner, the dimmer and the motion sensor. One thing that she didn't mention but did earlier was why the gateway signage and welcome into the community was taken off the table. I think that should be added if we're gonna.
That was that was for a different project.
Oh, okay. Well, I think that should be added.
The walking trail was part of the original plan and that was always going to be there.
Yeah. And and I guess those are like amenities that I see existing that are. Again, I don't know as if we deny this project that that's going to be on the table for apartment complexes. Are they going to be building that? You know, we we don't have. You know, we, we don't have a crystal ball here, but. Yeah, I wanted, the gateway thing seems very important and it's a source of pride. That the neighbors brought up a lot, so I would be interested in talking more about that if we were going to consider this project.
If I can just comment on that, that trail, that pathway through the property. And if Nick DeBar is listening, I, I thought we had a discussion about that at staff. And had come to the conclusion that the trail wasn't a good idea because it would lead pedestrians. To a very unsafe crossing in El Camino Real where there's very high speeds and. And not, not a safe area to cross and we didn't. Want to go there. I haven't talked about that recently. Kelly, do you know where we stand with that?
I, I think, I think there's some mixed opinions on that, El Camino and that location as it's built today. Is not horrible to cross because the lanes are so narrow and there's that median refuge in the middle. I will also say that the trail is planned on top of the city's sewer easement, which needs a drivable surface regardless. And so once you have a drivable surface over the sewer easement. It will act as a de facto walking path regardless. Of whether that's its only intent, so. So it's there partially because there's also a city sewer easement that runs along that property line that will have to remain. Accessible for maintenance vehicles. And, you know, relatively flat and accessible from both directions.
That walking path is also like right now, everybody cuts across the Methodist Church parking because it goes directly from the entrance to Paloma. Right to the entrance of Dove Creek and that path is far enough north that I don't think that's gonna change it for people going from one to the other. It might be a lovely path to walk your dog for leisure. But I don't think that it's going to cut off. I don't think it's going to eliminate the cutting through of the church because kids will go the most direct route. They don't care whose property they're walking through.
And I, I do have, I do have some concerns about the walking path on the sewer easement. There's manholes with covers on there and if somebody took a manhole cover off. And somebody's walking through there at night and they fall in it. Who's gonna maintain it? Having access to it, making sure cars don't drive out there, back there and there's some. It's kind of remote too, so I'm a little concerned about. It becoming a houseless highway, if you will. And then, but like as Phil said, that. The crossing mid-block crosswalk or crossing. Over El Camino, over to the Dove Creek Trailway system. Concerns me and I'm guessing within the, if it is built in the first year, I'll be getting a request for a mid-block crosswalk. We don't do those, so they're danger, they're more dangerous than that in intersection. You know, one time I was talking to Kelly earlier, I thought. Phil, don't you remember there was a pathway proposed along their fence line on the other side of the creek?
Yes, yes.
I mean, that might be more ideal and keep them out of the sewer easement. So just a thought.
You, you just brought up the creek. I am curious about the redirection of the creek. I know it's a seasonal creek, but. Why, why is that okay? Like, why can they just redirect the creek? Is it just because they're doing it in the right way? Or what? Because I thought there was like a thing about we, no redirection of Blue Line Creeks.
So that is. You bring up a great point because we have a lot of general plan policies that speak about creek setbacks, protecting riparian habitats, protecting creeks. But we don't have an ordinance that says you can't do it. We do have general plan policies that discourage it. But if you mitigate, you can do it. But again, if you're, you're talking about something that's kind of goes against the grain of general plan policy as well at the same time.
And Kelly, can you go back to the floodplain map for a second?
If I can figure out which way that is.
Thank you for letting me just toss around the, 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 the thing, so.
The closer one or the farther one? Which one?
So does the creek run right through the middle of this dark blue one outlined in red?
Yeah, the.
I'm just kind of curious as to if the input and the output of the new, of the proposed creek is the same.
Yeah, so there is a culvert that exists under El Camino where the water currently comes out. And then there are culverts that carry the water under Viejo Camino, so they will have to connect to those existing facilities. In order to keep the, the path and the flow and the upstream and downstream impacts.
Okay, so they're just kind of pushing the water in a different direction. But the, the in and out is the same.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think what's kind of important about this exhibit right here is look across the street and look where. There are houses and look where there's lots and look where there's blue. They were able to make those changes on the Dove Creek project. Just like the applicant is proposing here. What the applicant is proposing is a much more efficient system, a much safer system in terms of flooding. The water is gonna move through that cleanly and, and quickly. And that's what you want. You don't want it staying around. You want it in and out and that's what's happening with that design and that's what happened across the street at Dove Creek.
Well, the goal of these designs is to improve the water quality and that's what you hope you get out of. Any of these things.
And then they also had a program for their stormwater, they. The applicant's agent had talked about the porous pavement, the underground storage, so all the. Impervious surface that is coming off the development is going underground. And then designed to, to infiltrate into the soil versus going off into the creek. So that's part of how they're dealing with their, their drainage through that.
Yeah, I think it goes back to what Jeff said. I mean, the technical aspects of this plan are. Pretty cool.
Yeah.
It's just about whether. You know, the use of mini storage is, belongs in this neighborhood.
It's like I said before, I mean, if I had my, if I had my choice, I would rather have seventy-seven trips versus a bunch more again. People raced down my street. I live in a neighborhood where it's twenty-five mile an hour design speed. People do forty-five and fifty all the time. And I would, for me, compatibility is, is less traffic. And that's where, is, that's something that's really important to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't look at it as a, do we want a mini storage or not? I think it's more of an opportunity cost. Do we want that or do we want something higher traffic use? It's because there was a couple of comments that it's, it's going to be developed no matter what. I guess the only no matter what is if we rezoned to a open space and I don't. I don't see that happening.
Why the land?
Well, and I think also it's, you know, I mean, this is considered a gateway and. You know, is, is a, a mini storage something that we want in a place that. Does have land to be developed and we are going through the general plan, so a rezoning is possible. And so I think it's also, you know, talking about. Is this, is this what we want there for the future? Is this what we want there?
Well, how, how do you define gateway? I mean, for me.
Well, I mean, I, I didn't define it. The city defined it. The city calls it the gateway.
Well, for me, a gateway is something that's visual.
Right.
It doesn't matter what the use is. I can make anything look like, like someone said, put lipstick on the pig. You can, you can design anything to make look, look nice. And for me, that when I hear gateway, that's what I think of is there's a nice presentation as you're walking in. Now, I could have a, a very nice. High tower bill, building there. To me, that wouldn't be appropriate in that area. But from what I'm seeing of the, the architecture, to me, that's a, a, a very nice presentation. It's almost. Something that really bugged me before on the discussion was a discussion about the, the walls, the retaining walls that they had. And when I drive down that, down that avenue with the houses at Dove Creek that are right on the, on, you know, they have like five-foot backyards. Those buildings are huge next to the street, so. Is, is that part of the gateway? Is that not to be considered at the same time or the, the commercial center that's on the corner? To me, it's a, it's a presentation where we, we like to have nice facades, so that's what's going on here. The, the owner in my mind has made an excellent approach at trying to make something visual. So it meets the gateway. It's something we like to see. It's not gonna be distracting from that area. Whether it's many, it could be a whorehouse. It doesn't really matter. It's what it looks like.
Very well, Dennis.
I don't think that's conditionally allowed.
I was trying to think of a good, a juxtaposition absurd juxtaposition.
There is allowed a, a shooting, an indoor shooting range, though, public use. That is, it's a crazy thing.
Oh, my gosh. Wow, all right.
That was a strong comment.
Yeah. I don't know. Do you think that would be more traffic or less traffic?
Well, and then, yeah, going back to what, I think Tori had the question about. Do we have a, a view, a three-D view of that south side, I think it was? That area that you're like, what's going on over there where it's vacant? And I think if Kelly can speak to it, maybe, that that is the area that the applicant. Was wanting it rezoned for high-density multifamily housing.
Yeah, on the left side of the south elevation and on the right side, there's like, well, even before that, there's trees all along there because that's where the creek's going on that south side.
Yeah, so let me get to the landscape plan. So this is kind of the south elevation that you're speaking about and so there's a restoration with landscape there and then there's a vacant portion. The applicant did originally was proposing to leave this vacant for a future multifamily use. We believe based on the, the previous hydrology report that they will need most of this area for. For stormwater and existing water retention in their, in their floodway and floodplain mapping. So it is likely, although we don't have that detailed information yet, that this portion of the site will remain fairly naturalized.
Kelly, can you speak a little bit more to the, the easement and the trees and the parking? Can you go into a little bit more detail about that? Because. I feel like you went kind of fast.
The road easements and where, where.
Right away easement.
The Viejo Camino, so, so this darker. Dash line is the actual property line. So the way that we've conditioned the project, it is likely that we will have sidewalk right up to this property line or fairly close to it. Because we are conditioning a widening of, widening of Viejo Camino to allow for turn pockets. And also on, on street parking because that's what our collector's street section in the high-density residential area. And park area calls for. So these London plane trees that you see in this location will not be able to be there. That will be parking. And so the remaining area for landscaping will be this area. I believe it's probably a ten-foot setback. The right-of-way and the building.
Okay, so if. So if, if they. Okay, so that reduces the amount of landscape and is there that same easement on the El Camino side?
There is a wider right-of-way on El Camino. You can see the right-of-way here and currently it's only paved to about this location. At this time, we don't have plans to widen El Camino as part of this project. If it were widened in the future because the area built out more intensely, there, there could be widening, which would push the sidewalk to this right-of-way line. The city will retain rights to build out El Camino to the extent of the right-of-way if needed.
Which would get rid of the trees there as well.
Correct.
And is there sidewalk there now on either side?
I do not believe there is sidewalk on this side, so they, they are conditioned to do some improvements to El Camino. Which would be a bike lane because they don't believe that that's there currently, although Nick can chime in and then sidewalk.
It's just a natural pavement.
To widen all of the way and provide additional travel lanes.
So they would do sidewalk just on their part, just in front of their property?
Correct, yeah. And that's generally how we do frontage improvements is when properties develop. And it would be the entire length of the property, not just where the development is.
It's like you knew what I was gonna ask.
We actually have a CDBG project planned in a couple of years to connect the other side of the sidewalk, that missing piece over the creek bridge. So, and then some other improvements are.
Nick, what about on ECR? It, it almost looks like there's sidewalk proposed there. Is that correct or?
Yes, I believe so. Is that right, Kelly?
Yeah, we have conditioned frontage improvements for both frontages to include curb gutter sidewalk. Bike lanes and then on-street parking on Viejo Camino, but no, no lane widening or on-street parking on El Camino.
Okay, but still curb gutter sidewalk on El Camino?
Yes.
Which will be a big improvement out there.
Does that property though, does it connect to? The Paloma Creek Mini Market or that mini market?
A couple of properties away. I don't know if. The aerial.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, the mini market is here and then this property is here, so.
So the sidewalk would be an island, essentially.
An island for now, but that's generally, generally how, how things progress.
Are you looking for an appropriate crosswalk near Viejo Camino?
Actually, I am. Okay.
A gateway sign on a, on a, on a overpass bridge.
Now, Kelly, Kelly, you brought up an interesting point that the, that corner of the triangle area. You know, where it kind of goes out there in your current slide where it goes to the south. You were suggesting that, you know, the applicant previously had talked about putting multifamily in there, but now it could end up, he might need it for his. Stormwater runoff. With that.
We believe that to be the case. And, and even if not needed, you know, we have that condition restriction for access on El Camino. Because it's probably just not an appropriate place. For, for something to be sort of, you know, shoehorned in there.
So this is, this is currently two legal lots, right?
It is, and I believe there's condition in the resolution to merge those lots together. Forward.
Okay. Yeah.
Just comment to Jeff.
So really that big area is all gonna be open space essentially. Have, it's gonna have to be left as open space if it's not part of the conditional use. And if it's, there's a lot merger, then. They can't do much else with that area.
Correct. I mean, they could, if the zoning changes or if uses change, they could always come in, you know, for an amendment if something were to fit there. But based on the previous hydrology, we do believe they might need that. If they're doing underground storage. Then obviously they won't have as big of an impact as they did with their previous project where they did not have underground storage. But it is likely that some of that area will be needed to accommodate hydrology and then should wetlands still exist on the property. Potential wetland restoration if required by the permitting agencies.
That's interesting, okay.
I'm reading, I'm reading some comments to the panelists here.
The, the comments are difficult because they're not part of public comment and we've already. So I don't really know how to deal with that on the Zoom meeting. Reopen public.
We've closed the public. Comment and. Hearing, so please refrain from giving us more comments. Unless we reopen the public comments.
The loophole of Zoom. I think there is a way to turn that chat off, but I don't know what it is.
We'll have to learn that one in our next step.
Well, are we ready for a vote or not or a motion or?
If somebody would like to make a motion, we, we have to. Make a motion that we can be fine for all of those those items. If if there is a motion to approve them. And if we have two 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 different motions, right, that you.
Yeah, there I when when a motion's made, if we're making motion for approval, I will go back to the condition slide. And then I know there were some other conditions that we talked about adding. So I'll leave this slide up there for you to complete your choices.
And there was a motion for denial too.
Right, right. And there that's both on that on that slide. So.
We have resolution A for approval, resolution B for denial. Requesting additional information. I suppose if we have a motion and move forward. And don't meet our majority as Brian has described it, then the best option would be to continue it. To another date.
Is there any other discussion?
If we continue it to another date, what do the other two commissioners do?
We we would re give a version of the presentation. You know, to allow them to have all of the information available to them for their vote and decision.
Would they be able to watch this?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because as much as I love y'all, I I don't really want to sit through all of this again.
And one thing about it, one thing to note, if the commission decides to continue this action. That if you continue to a date certain, we don't typically have to renotice the project. If you continue to a date uncertain, we will have to renotice the project and kind of go back out, which. Is kind of a big deal for us too as staff. So just something to think about.
I should have told Jason he had to be here.
But we could take a vote of some type. And whether we had four or it doesn't really matter if the vote, we could we could push it on to the city council. Or I guess if we don't have a majority vote, it would be pushed on to the city.
Right. So this this is the last step for this project. It's a condition.
Yeah, there's no. So a a three, two vote, it sounds like would be an inaction either way. And this project would. Essentially die, would not go to city council. So.
Can it be appealed if it's an inaction?
The applicant.
No, I think if it's inaction, we will have to continue it. Only inaction can be appealed. So if there's inaction, the motion would be to continue it to either a date certain or a date uncertain. And then at that point, we would hope for a final action. And then at that point, it could be appealed.
So can can we can we do like a somebody give a emotion and do a straw poll instead of actually taking the vote? And if if we don't get a majority on either one, then continue it to a date certain when we have everybody here.
My advice would be that you take the vote, not a straw vote, you take a real vote. And then if you don't get four on one position on the resolution. Then it's going to need to come back because that's not action.
Could I say something for discussion too with those three options? So I'm under the impression before hearing that. The applicant with the project as is is going to need that stormwater runoff area and it's not going to be developed. I was under the impression that they were very motivated to make that developed and it be for housing. So I am more of a proponent of that third option for the planning commission. May continue at a noted date, not just, you know, a real date. And that the applicant provides some clear information on alternatives for where they might move the buildings. To be able to then utilize some footprint for building.
So I. Yes, the so there's a couple of things there. Number one, housing's not currently allowed, so they could not. We could not take a planning commission action to approve a plan that shows any housing. Number two, that would require a fairly detailed hydrology analysis, similar to what they did last time. Which is absolutely appropriate if that's what you need to make a decision, but we probably would not continue it to a date certain at that point. Because they would need to go have their hydrologist provide information and we don't know how long that might take them to put together.
Kelly, but if they if they do a lot merger, would they be able to? Do that additional housing on on a single on on a single lot?
If if the zoning were changed to allow multifamily housing in the public zone. Or or in whatever zone it could be changed to, they could they could do that. If they wanted to re-subdivide the lot, we would need to look at minimum lot size and how everything laid out.
Now, lastly, keep in mind, another option too for the commission is you can condition this project to do something. Else with that property, so long as it's consistent with the general plan and zoning. In other words, you if you could say that in order for you to develop this part of the property, we want you to put that part of the property. Into an open space conservation easement to accommodate enhancement of the riparian habitat. Whether or not you need it, they need it for drainage. So you could do that as a condition as well. So there is other options out there.
Lot lot adjustment.
Um, is there a way we can motion to continue to like a certain specific date on this?
You you absolutely. And if you're requesting additional information, though, that just gets a little tricky.
Okay.
Our next hearing date is May fourth. And then we have another hearing that's scheduled two weeks after that. So we can start laying out those dates. But.
So if we have, if we don't have a majority on any conclusion, then it becomes an inaction. When would it then come to back to us?
So then you could you'd have to make another motion to continue it to a date certain or uncertain.
Okay. Well, would somebody like to make a can? Would you like to make a motion and then we can vote on it if nothing?
I'm interested in resolution A. The second sentence says findings must be made to support the use permit and conditions. That may be added to enhance projects compatibility with the G P and the neighborhood. So we are having to establish findings along with the motion when it comes to the resolution A.
Yes, so you have findings that are currently included in resolution A with support of those findings. So if you are in agreement with those findings and the affirmative and the evidence provided, you can simply just adopt resolution A. And then we do have those recommended additional conditions and then the conditions that were talked about, should you desire to add those in.
Could we add to the resolution findings? For instance, I've been speaking a lot about traffic and speed. To me, that's a compatibility issue for a neighborhood to have least amount of cars in traffic. To me, that's a benefit. We're also talking about that triangular piece being maybe put into open space. Would that not also be a compatible issue based on comments that have been made?
And are you are you adding a condition to require an open space easement over?
I'm I'm asking questions at this moment.
Well, we had a motion.
That's a motion. I'll make that motion. Yes. And I'll add the triangle piece as a conservation open space. Parcel or or easement.
And then there's also the staff recommended amended conditions. And then we also spoke about a potential hours of operation condition. Do you want to add any of those?
Well, they they provided hours of operation, which I.
So they they have they have said that that that's not enforceable. That's just their proposed plan. But currently, without a condition, they could operate twenty-four seven in the future if they chose to.
Then I would include the hours of operation that the applicant has offered to us in that motion. And then the additional conditions that we spoke about also.
Does anybody want to second that? Okay, Victoria. Okay, we have a first and a second, Annette. Can you do a roll call, please?
Yeah, I just, you said hours of operation for what the applicant stated, but can you just say what that is for the motion?
I can't specifically remember it, believe.
Do you have that slide?
I if I stop sharing and look at it, I do, me.
Think it was six to eight.
And then also with the additional conditions, but I wasn't clear on what those additional conditions are exactly. So I believe those are staff's conditions.
Those were in the slide that Kelly had. We have those. We can share with you, Annette, in the slide. It was about.
Let me see.
It office hours and operation hours, I believe.
Still wondering about that gateway sign. How are we going to get that, guys?
You you can you can ask to make that part of the motion as your second. We also did not include a lighting condition and that's okay.
I know.
You can always, you can always in your motion propose your own hours of operation, seven A M to eight P M, for example. If we can't find it.
I think it was six to eight.
I see it. They want their office hours are eight to five and their access hours are six A M to nine P M. Are those the hours you want to confirm?
Yes, I think those are reasonable. You know, as they were talking about. You know, contractors and so on, people using it to go to work. And might have to get something out before they leave. And when they come home.
Okay, so are we clear? I'm gonna call the votes. Well, Annette, the also the lighting condition, I think that was something that Kelly had mentioned. Could be an added condition that I I think would be great to have.
I will amend my motion to include the lighting that Kelly had Kelly had spoke about.
Okay. All right, so Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
No.
Vice Chairperson Keen?
No.
Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Yes.
So that's three, two, three yeses and two noes. Yes.
So can we, would somebody like a motion to push this to a date circle?
Phil, what dates as you say were available?
May fourth is our next hearing date. We do have another zoning amendment discussion. We may have ready for that hearing. But yeah, that's your next date. And after that. It would be the the eighteenth. I believe, is that right? Yeah.
I think that one sounds more plausible.
Would the eighteenth be more preferable?
I think it just depends on if you're needing additional information. So if you need additional information, I would recommend a later date. But if we're just rehearing the item. Either date works.
Let's make it the fourth.
I don't know if it makes a difference, but I've got a meeting on the eighteenth. I've got meetings on the fourth and the eighteenth. But I could get I could brief one of the other lawyers in my firm and have them be available.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I think you've spoiled this party enough, Brian. I'm not sure we want you to come back.
I was just swinging a miss.
I don't write the laws, so don't don't kill the messenger.
I work for a lawyer. I know how much fun you guys are.
I haven't seen Brian for a while. I like the goatee. Good luck.
Well, thank you.
Anyway, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this to May fourth.
I get a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Keen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
No.
Chairperson Van den Eyck?
As much as I wish that we could just take care of tonight, oh, yes, we'll do it.
And motion passes four one.
Can we confirm that the other two are going to be here on that day?
Yes, we will do that.
You will check that out.
Yes, and also confirming that we are not having to renotice, correct?
That is correct. It's date certain.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on.
Uh-oh, see, he's coming back.
Yeah, sorry about that. I meant to say yes on that. I don't know if it's gonna make a difference in how you vote, but so the public hearing was closed. And he would need to reopen the public hearing before you continue it. And you're gonna need to revote on that. Because once once the public hearing's been closed.
I'd like to amend the motion to continue the hearing until May fourth.
Hold on. There's there's another step first. You need to reopen the public hearing. So that's the first thing that needs to be done is just now to reopen the public hearing. Which the chair can do.
Sorry.
That's all right. I'm just saying that that's what should be done. So the public hearing should be reopened.
So Jeff, that's your step.
Yeah, and then what's the next step?
Well, you gotta you gotta we gotta say the words.
Okay, we're gonna reopen the public hearing.
Right. And and now that the public hearing is still open, because the meeting hasn't been adjourned yet. You can make make a motion to continue the hearing to whatever. Whatever motion you want to make.
I would like to make a motion to continue this meeting until May fourth.
Second.
Okay.
Been punchy.
Okay, so I'm sorry, the second was Hughes, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yep.
Commissioner McIntyre? Oh, she's not here. Vice Chairperson Keen?
Yes.
And Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, for keeping us on task here.
Anytime.
Okay, do we move to the director's report? Phil, did you have anything for us?
Yeah, a couple of things. Great job tonight, Commission. By the way, everyone hanging in there a long time. I do want to let you know about an item we have coming up May fourth. We're going to be discussing about something about a mini storage. And it looks like we will also have potentially some other zoning amendments to discuss. That we've been working on for a little while, a whole series of amendments that we like to bring forward annually. One of those is some implementation from our housing element. And a few other things. So we hope to have that ready for you. That's it in the near term. Lots of stuff going on in the city right now. We're definitely staying busy as a planning team. We do have a new economic development person that's going to be starting with us on the week of May third. Her name is Lorelei. Really glad to have her on board. And that's my quick update.
I have a quick question. I promise it will be quick. On Morrow Road, there's a little sign and it says that Morrow Liquor and something is applied for a license. But I've never seen anything else going on on that property. Do you have any idea?
They can lot there that's kind of on the, yeah, there is a store approved there with some mixed use residential above it. It was approved a couple of years ago. It's been taking them forever to get going on that. They had a very difficult time getting. Encroachment permits from Caltrans to build a sidewalk. And then they were told to wait for Caltrans to build the sidewalk. Now they've done it and they probably got to rebuild it. Then they ran into some significant groundwater issues on the property. And then they had to scale. And then they had to scale back their project for for a cost efficiency. But it looks like they did proceed with a liquor license and they're still wanting to proceed forward with that project. It's a two-story building that is going to have some kind of a convenience store on the first floor and possibly a residential use or office and or both on the second floor.
I'm really excited because it's right next to where I work and Fridays come not fast enough.
And yeah, I think it's going to be like a might even be a delicacy shop in there or something as well, too. I don't know. Kelly might.
Fabulous.
Lunch.
Yeah.
Thank you. I've been wanting to ask you about that and I always forget and for some reason tonight I remembered, so thank you.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you, everybody, for hanging in there. Without any other comment, we will adjourn until May fourth and hope that everybody is here.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, thank you. This is a good discussion. Appreciate you guys.
Yeah, I enjoyed it.
All right. See you May fourth. May the fourth be with you.
Oh, yes, yes. Good night, y'all. I'm really
You all.